Good evening, everyone. I want to welcome you to the October 13th meeting of the Board of Zoning Appeals. My name is Jeff Carson. I'll be serving as Chair of tonight's meeting. Make a couple of introductions before we begin here in the chambers. Me, I have Commissioner Duane Beth and Commissioner Aaron Ward. We also have staff, the planning staff, OCD's Espinosa, Alyssa Marcy, Rodney Lucas, and Byron Toy, and Michael Farley with the Unified Government Legal Department. Online, we have Commissioner Joseph Straws, Commissioner Mark Muller, Vice Chairman Commissioner Karen Jones, Commissioner Jim Ernst, and Commissioner Brandy Armstrong. So with that, I will now turn it over to Rose Morris, our Executive Assistant, who will read the opening statement.
Hello, we would like to welcome everyone participating in the meeting of the Board of Zoning Appeals. Members of the Board are participating remotely by Zoom or in person in the Commission Chamber. Mr. Jeff Carson is serving as Chairman this evening. Please note the following instructions for the meeting. If you're joining by Zoom, please make sure you have an appropriate background. For the members of the public attending virtually this meeting, please use the raise your hand feature when you want to speak on an application. If you are present in the Commission Chamber, please come to the microphone at the front of the room when your application is called. After the Chairman recognizes you, please state your name and address and make your comments. If you're having issues getting onto the Zoom meeting, please see the Planning and Urban Design website on ycoKCK.org. Proper meeting decorum is expected of all participating in the meeting, and anyone who fails to act properly will be removed from the meeting. The city reserves the right to discontinue a meeting if any improper behavior occurs which prevents the uninterrupted conduct of business. The format of this evening's meeting is as follows. First, the applicant will be given 15 minutes to make an opening statement explaining their proposal, which includes the applicant, consultants, and other members of the applicant's team. Members of the Board may then address questions to the applicant. Any persons wishing to speak in favor will be recognized and allowed to do so at that time. Then, those in opposition will be recognized and make their statements and ask questions. Each member of the public will be given five minutes to express their opinions, and time may not be shared between speakers. A speaker's time may be extended in five-minute intervals by a two-thirds majority vote of the Board. The Chairman will ask for a show of hands of people who are in support or in opposition who do not wish to speak. Then, the applicant will then answer questions and make a closing statement. The public hearing portion of the meeting will be closed, and the public will only be allowed to address the Board if a question is directed towards them. Then, the Board will discuss the application and make their decision in a brief statement of the reason for the motion preceding the making of the motion. Motions shall include the staff's conditions unless otherwise stated in the motion. Our first case tonight is Boza 2024-034. Janice Perez is a variance for side yard and rear yard setbacks for a backyard deck at 1500 North 28th Street. Janice Perez here?
All right, please go ahead and come up to the microphone, please. Start off, give us your name and address, and tell us what you'd like to do here.
Yes, my name is Janice Perez, and my address is 1500 North 28th Street, Kansas City, Kansas 66102. And I'm here because I started building a deck without a permit, and I didn't know I have to ask for a permit, so I'm here to request for a permit.
Okay, and it's going to be a certain size, but you're going to need a variance? Is that why you're here tonight?
Yeah.
How big is the deck going to be?
It's 12 by 14.
Okay. And there's just a violation of the setback regarding that, right?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Any questions from the applicant? I'm sorry, any questions from the Commission to the applicant? Okay, I'm not seeing anything. Anybody in the audience, online, or in the chambers who want to speak to this case? Raise your hand or come forward. Seeing no one, we'll go to staff and get their comment.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman, Byron Toy Planning Department. As the applicant stated, the deck was first built without a variance, and then subsequently we had a building commit. They did get a building, they applied for building commit back in June 2024. They got a stop work order in May of 2024, so they're trying to correct the action. That being said, as with the variance, they did proceed work without first obtaining a variance, so staff has to recommend denial. However, we have conditions for approval should you choose to approve this application.
All right, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Toy? Seeing none, I will stand for a motion when ready. Byron, what is the variance? How much are we short?
Yeah, Byron Toy Planning Department. The sense it's in the rear yard, it's a side yard corner is what the issue is. They can project five feet into the required yard closer than what's allowed by setback. And so they projected three and a half feet, so they are a violation of one and a half feet. So they would have to trim off a foot and a half to be in compliance.
Okay, so they're 18 inches over on the size.
That's correct.
Okay, I just wanted to provide that clarification to you all. Any additional questions for staff? If not, I'll stand for that motion.
Mr. Ward.
Mr. Ward, go ahead.
I'm making a motion to approve Boza 2024-034 subject to stipulations that staff has.
All right, thank you. Motion made for approval of Boza Case 2024-034 by Commissioner Ward. Is that a second, Commissioner Armstrong?
Yes, it is.
All right, thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Straws?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Armstrong?
Aye.
Beth?
Aye.
Easterwood? Easter's not here, sorry. Ernst?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Muller?
Aye.
Motion carries seven to zero.
All right, thank you. All right, you've been approved. Call first next time.
Okay, yes.
All right, thank you.
Our next application is Boza 2025-025. Tamara McConnell is a variance for a separation distance between a school, church, and liquor store at 1130 Quandara Boulevard. Is Tamara McConnell here?
I don't see her online either.
Are anyone else to speak on the application?
Anyone here tonight speak on Boza Case 2025-025 on behalf of Tamara McConnell? Need you to raise your hand, please, if you're online. All right, Byron, how would you like to handle this? Given there's lots of discussion on this one and the applicant is not available.
Right. I mean, I can present it, and you guys can make a decision whether or not you want to hold it over for a month or proceed with.
I'm sorry, I got Commissioner Straws' hand up, so I'm going to go to him first. Commissioner Straws?
I'd much rather have the petitioner present this particular case after reading through it and kind of knowing the area and looking at the plans. And that's just my preference, to be honest with you. I wouldn't want staff to present on this particular project in that area.
Anyone else have any comments, or is that a motion you'd like to make?
That is a motion I would like to make. If that's, I don't know if that's a, I don't know if we're in the quarry. I don't know how that works. I just, I've never.
You'd like to make a motion for a holdover and have this case heard? There's no reason to waste the staff's time or anyone else's by listening to it if the rest of the Commission feels the same way. So if that is a motion, I'll take that.
I'll make the motion to hold over Boza 2025-25 for 30 days to allow the petitioner to present the case in front of the full Commission.
All right, thank you. Motion for 30-day holdover made by Commissioner Straws. Is that a second, Commissioner Armstrong?
Yes, it is.
All right, thank you. Is there any discussion on the motion for a holdover so we can hear from the applicant directly? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Straws?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Armstrong?
Aye.
Beth?
Aye.
Ernst?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Muller?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries seven to zero.
All right, thank you. I want to ask legal counsel, should I have asked for public comment?
This is Mike Farley, legal counsel. Not necessarily, because there is going to be an opportunity for the applicant to come back forward. So yeah.
All right, thank you. If there's anybody online that came to speak about Boza Case 2025-025, Tamara McConnell, this case will be heard next month. There's been a 30-day holdover request. So if you're online for that one, you can go ahead and sign off if you like, and then we'll convene the City Planning Commission in about 17 or 18 minutes. Thank you all. Everyone, I want to welcome you to the October 13th meeting of the City Planning Commission. My name is Jeff Carson. I'm serving as Chair of tonight's meeting. I'm going to make a couple of quick introductions, and we'll get started with our meeting. First off, I want to introduce the planning staff that's with us tonight. Alyssa Marcy, Byron Toy, Rose Morris, OCD's Espinosa, and Rodney Lucas. We also have from the Unified Government Legal Department, Michael Farley with us this evening. And the following Commissioners are present, either online or in the Commission. Online, we have Commissioner Beverly Easterwood, Commissioner Jake Miller, Commissioner Jim Ernst, Vice Chair Karen Jones, Commissioner Joseph Straws, Commissioner Brandy Armstrong. And here in the chambers with me tonight, I've got Commissioner Aaron Ward and Commissioner Duane Beth. So with that said, I will now turn it over to Rose Morris, who will read the opening statement on how we'll run tonight's meeting, and we'll get things rolling. Thank you.
Hello, welcome, everyone, to the meeting of the City Planning Commission. Members are participating remotely by Zoom or in person in the Commission Chamber. Mr. Jeff Carson is serving as Chairman this evening. Please note the following instructions for the meeting. If you're joining by Zoom, please make sure you have an appropriate background. For those members of the public attending the meeting virtually this evening, please use the raise your hand feature when you want to speak on an application. If you are present in the Commission Chamber, please come to the microphone at the front of the room when your application is called. After the Chairman recognizes you, please state your name and address and make your comments. If you're having issues getting into the Zoom meeting, please see the Planning and Urban Design website on ycoKCK.org. Proper meeting decorum is expected of all participating in the meeting, and anyone who fails to act properly may be removed from the meeting. The city reserves the right to discontinue a meeting if any improper behavior occurs which prevents the uninterrupted conduct of business. The Planning Commission is a voluntary body of citizens who will review each zoning proposal. For all change of zones, special use permits, vacations, and preliminary plan reviews on tonight's agenda, the Planning Commission makes recommendations to the board of, yeah, Unified Government Board of Commissioners, who will then make the final decisions on Thursday, October 30th, 2025. For final plots and final plan reviews heard tonight, the Planning Commission's decision is final, and there will not be another hearing. The format of this evening's meeting is as follows. First, the applicant will be given 15 minutes to make an opening statement explaining their proposal, which includes the applicant, consultants, and other members of the applicant's team. Members of the Commission will then address their questions to the applicant. Then, any persons wishing to speak in favor will be recognized and allowed to do so at that time. Next, those in opposition will be recognized and allowed to make their statements, ask questions. Each member of the public will be given five minutes to express their opinions, and time may not be shared between speakers. A speaker's time may be extended in five-minute intervals by a two-thirds majority vote of the Commission. The Chairman will ask for a show of hands of people who are support and opposition who do not wish to speak. Then, the applicant will answer questions and make a closing statement. The public hearing portion of the meeting will be closed, and the public will only be allowed to just address the Commission if a question is directed towards them. Finally, the Commission will discuss the application and make their recommendation. If those in opposition want to formally protest a change of zone or special use permit, a means is available by legal protest petition, which can be obtained by emailing the Planning and Urban Design Department at planninginfo@ycoKCK.org tomorrow morning. I also just want to note this evening that at the request at the interim Planning Director and the Commission Chairman, we will quickly take a vote to hold over SP 2025-0262 until the November 10th meetings. That one is. Tamara McConnell, 4.2.2. As the applicant was not in attendance for their related Board of Zoning Appeals application, as well, the reports section will be moved up to before the consent agenda. Afterwards, the consent agenda and non-consent agenda will be taking place right afterwards. So we'll start with the holdover vote for SP 2025-0262. Tamara McConnell is a special use permit for a liquor store at 1130 Quandara Boulevard.
Thank you, Rose. So as you all know, the applicant was not available during the Board of Zoning Appeals. Therefore, we cannot hear the corresponding special use application tied to that case until after we hear the Board of Zoning Appeals case. So at this time, we'd like to entertain, or I'd like to entertain a motion for a 30-day holdover. Commissioner Jones? I need you to unmute, please.
Motion to hold over for 30 days special use permit, case number 2025-062.
Thank you for that. Motion to hold over special use application 2025-062. Is that a second, Commissioner Ernst?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Straws?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Armstrong?
Aye.
Beth?
Aye.
Ernst?
Aye.
Jones?
She said aye.
Okay.
She's.
Easterwood?
Aye.
Muller?
Sorry, aye.
Okay, thank you. Muller?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries eight to zero.
All right, thank you. So those of you that are online or in the chambers, if you came tonight to speak about 1130 Quandara Boulevard, this case will not be heard. It will be heard next month. So I don't want anybody to stay around waiting for that case to be called, because it will not be called this evening. Also, I'm not sure that I introduced Commissioner Beverly Easterwood in my opening comments, but I want to acknowledge that she is on the call as well.
Chairman Carson?
Yes, go ahead, Commissioner Miller.
I didn't get called, but I was going to be an aye. Just wanted to let everyone.
I intentionally ignored you, Commissioner Miller. No, I did not. No, I apologize for that. Commissioner Miller is in attendance, and I apologize for that omission if I made that.
Oh, sorry.
You said that, you said that. You said I was on, I just wasn't called on the roll, so I just want to make sure.
Oh, okay. You were not called for the roll, excuse me. You got, did you call? Do you want to go and get his vote?
Okay, Miller?
I'm an aye, so.
Okay, nine to zero.
Thank you for pointing that out, Commissioner Miller. I think we got it right now.
Okay. So.
At this time, we're going to go ahead and hear the reports, and we're going to start off with Alyssa Marcy with the Planning Department regarding vision, mission, and goals of the Vision Zero Action Plan.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Alyssa Marcy. I'm the long-range planner and planning in urban design. I am going to give a brief overview of the Vision Zero Action Plan, which, if you remember, two months ago, very late in the evening, I presented this project to you. We're coming back here tonight, hopefully, to get approval for a resolution to adopt the vision, mission, and goals of the Vision Zero Action Plan. So again, I'll go over a quick refresh of what it is, tell you about what those vision, mission, and goals are, and then what the next steps would look like. So Vision Zero, this is part of a federal program. So this is funded by a grant through Federal Highways that we received for $1 million plus a match that KDOT has provided. So Vision Zero is the goal to eliminate traffic fatalities and serious injuries related to our roadways, so transportation safety. This is an initiative that is countywide. So this is in partnership with Bonner Springs, Edwardsville, and the city of Lake Quavira that is located in Wyandotte County. But this is a national push to fix a lot of the safety issues that you see on our roadways, and that's related to every user that uses our road system. So just a little overview on what we've done so far. The project kicked off in winter of 2024. That was really our data analysis section. And then we spent much of summer, spring and summer of this past year doing community engagement. So we went to several events. We also had an online map where folks could put in intersections or roadways where they've experienced traffic-related safety issues. So whether that's a car crash, or maybe a near miss as a pedestrian, or a place where there are lighting issues, or a lack of crosswalks is a big one that we heard. So we received over 500 comments on that map. We also were able to look at, how does that correlate to our data, right? And that data is all of those crash reports that our safety, our law enforcement, our safety departments look at. So that's both local, state, and federal highways. And what we saw is that a lot of our, there's a lot of overlap. Our residents kind of know where the issues are because they're experiencing it on a daily basis. So what we've been doing since really the end of summer is looking at our policies more specifically, formulating a vision, mission, and goals, and hopefully getting those adopted. Part of the reason that we do need to get that adopted is because in order to qualify for construction funding, design and construction funding through the same grant program that still exists, we do have to show that our Planning Commission and our elected officials are on board with the goal of Vision Zero. And then finally, we'll kind of wrap this up from the public work side. I should have mentioned, this is a co-led project by Planning and Public Works, because at the end of the day, the work we're doing here impacts what they do on a day-to-day basis, and that's fixing our roadways. So all of the analysis we've done and the prioritization of our unsafe intersections and roads will feed directly into the capital improvement program, which is a process in which they rank projects and prioritize them and figure out when they're going to dedicate funds. So this will all feed into that process for them. Okay, and just to recap, we have a really robust steering committee that's met throughout this. So this is both internal departments within the UG that are involved in some way, shape, or form with transportation safety, as well as outside members, because we recognize that there are a lot of organizations that are doing work related to this that are not part of the UG school districts. We have every school district on our steering committee. You know, we have representatives from Safe Kids Greater Kansas City, Bike Walk KC, the whole person. So we have every ability of a person also represented on our steering committee. And they were a really big part of shaping what you're about to see. So we took our vision, mission, goals to them, and looking at what other cities have adopted and language they've used, our steering committee was able to shape what you're about to see so that it fit Wyandotte County. And so what are those? So, um, you can actually just go to the next slide. This is kind of a repeat. I'll just, I'll read these. I don't like doing that, but just so you know what you're kind of signing off on. So the vision is to eliminate fatalities and serious injuries on roads in Wyandotte County by 2050 through strategies that provide safe and healthy mobility for all. And you might be thinking, well, 2050 is not that far away. That seems maybe like a lofty goal, but there are actually cities in the United States that have already achieved that. And this is not getting rid of all crashes, right? There's still going to be crashes that occur that are property damage, but the goal is that you're eliminating fatality and serious injury. So the mission, the Unified Government of Wyandotte County, Kansas City, Kansas, and partner cities of Bonner Springs, Edwardsville, and Lake Quavira are committed to eliminating traffic-related deaths and serious injuries by adopting data-driven policies that prioritize human life and safety. Through strong community collaboration and access to safe and reliable transportation systems, we will create a transportation environment that protects all users regardless of neighborhood mode or ability. I will add to, this was also, did come in front of the Public Works Standing Committee, because this is a co-led project. Planning is going through this channel, which is typical for when we get things adopted. But Public Works has been working with the Board of Commissioners representatives that are on Public Works Standing Committee as well to that, the language that you see here. And then the next, finally, is our goals. So these are broad, and as we get more into the nitty-gritty of the capital improvement plan, these will look like actual projects, and these are the driving goals behind that. Improve safety for all road users regardless of neighborhood mode or ability. Reduce traffic deaths and serious injuries across the county. Improve access to safe routes near schools, parks, and transit stops. Increase community awareness of traffic safety through public education. Increase partnership and collaboration across departments and organizations, including schools and law enforcement, to encourage safe driving behaviors and design roads that prioritize safety over speeds. So for us, Vision Zero will end up also with a toolkit of different types of solutions. So these are going to be infrastructure solutions, these will be policy solutions, and then these will also be enforcement solutions in which we're working with PD Sheriff and others to talk about what are those new best practices? What are we doing, what aren't we doing? And again, if you want to go to the next, the last slide, I guess. It's critical that we get this adopted to be able to demonstrate to the federal government that our county is committed to achieving this vision in order for us to go after those implementation dollars to reach the vision. So that is all I have, and I'll take any questions.
All right, thank you. Are there any questions for staff on this? So at this point, you need a motion from us to adopt?
The resolution.
The resolution, all right. Thank you. Any questions for staff? Commissioner Jones?
Be sure. I mean, this seems like almost a no-brainer in terms of the information that we got and the usefulness of the program and the advantages. Are there any cautions that we might be missing?
Alyssa Marcy, I'm not sure I exactly understand your question by cautions, but for us, it kind of is a no-brainer. This is, I think, something everyone can get behind is safety for everyone on the streets. The other thing, too, is that this is a potentially no-match grant situation to get some of our roadways fixed. So, you know, without it, it's going to be harder to find that money. So hopefully, we can get it.
Yeah, no, I think you got the point of it. It's just like it's, again, a no-brainer. I don't know why we would say no to this with what I'm seeing in hearings. But thank you. I just wanted to confirm that we weren't missing any, anything.
Sure, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Straws has a question.
I didn't have a question. I was just going to make the motion.
All right, go ahead, please.
I make the motion that we adopt the Vision Zero Wyandotte County policy as presented to us today.
All right, motion to approve the resolution brought forth to us tonight on vision, mission, and goals of the Vision Zero Action Plan made by Commissioner Straws. Is that a second, Commissioner Jones?
Yes, it is.
All right, thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Straws?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Armstrong?
Aye.
Beth?
Aye.
Ernst?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Easterwood?
Aye.
Muller?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries nine to zero.
All right, thank you very much.
Next on our list is the ordinance amending the sign code. It is a ordinance amending portions of the Unified Government sign code by expanding the number and types of signs that are permitted in commercial, industrial, and mixed-use zoning districts.
Yes, sir, good evening.
Good evening, Chairman Carson, and members of the Planning Commission. My name's Alan Howes, Assistant County Administrator, and been the lead staff on Mayor Gardner's Business Development Task Force, which has been meeting for the last 12 to 14 months and with a variety of stakeholders looking at ways to improve and streamline the processes that businesses have to go through in order to set up shop in KCK or do a development in KCK. So actually, the task force met for the last time today, this afternoon, and what you see before you is a set of recommendations that came out of the task force and that the members recommended that the Planning Commission look at and hopefully forward on to the full Commission for action. The task force members also hope that the work of that task force will continue into the next administration, whomever that is. They recognize kind of the value of that and the value of looking intentionally at our processes and at our ordinances and trying to see how can we continue to get better. There were a lot of staff involved with it, some of which are here, some of which are not. Want to thank them, want to thank Commissioner Burrows and Commissioner Stites, who were the co-chairs of the task force, and all the members of the task force who generously gave of their time and their expertise to come up with the recommendations. So I'll go to the next slide, if you would. As you may recall, in earlier this year on June 9th, the Planning Commission approved recommendations from the task force related to lifting parking minimums east of 635. This was for all commercial projects as well as for residential, or for mixed-use up to six units for a period of three years. There have been sort of anecdotal reports of increased project activity and inquiries related to that. So that's positive momentum from that. The task force has continued to meet over the summer and fall, and the recommendations that are before you tonight are in two areas. One is really buy, write, home occupations, and the other is related. One is really buy-ride home occupations and the other is related to the sign code. Next slide. So the origin of kind of both of those really looked at special use permits and Alyssa Marcy with, with planning did a deep dive on special use permits. What are the ones that are most often coming before us? And just as you all know, but for the general public, each special use permit is really pretty time-intensive for the applicants themselves, for staff and doing notifications and reviews, for the planning commission yourselves and for the full commission. So each one of those special use permits represents a significant investment of time and, you know, areas where we can reduce or eliminate the need for that intensive process and match the, the, the process to the potential use that's proposed is really the focus of those recommendations. So that is really on how can we create channels for buy-ride processes in areas that also still protect the public interest while retaining the special use permit process for those things that require additional review and perhaps affect on communities. So the recommendations that you'll hear first are related to home occupancy, and these are, would be buy-ride for home occupancy businesses that meet six conditions. So we'll transition into that here in a second, but I just wanted to, to kind of emphasize that, that really, we're not talking about all home-based businesses. We're really talking about ones that can check the box on six conditions, and if they meet all of those, they have a special lane, a buy-ride lane, if you will, that allows them to go and get a license and get, you know, start their business without the impact or disruption to the neighborhood. If it's something more intensive, again, that special use permit process remains in place and remains the channel that they will be directed to go through. Secondly, you'll hear from Ms. Marcy around recommendations to simplify the sign code, and the task force reviewed the sign code and looked for ways where either the, the ordinances were not matching up to kind of the reality of how people were using signs or they were so kind of onerous that they were inhibiting and getting in the way of businesses being able to form or to advertise themselves and to be successful. So the simplifications is what you'll see on the sign code. Next slide. So just real briefly, special use permits, you can see, you know, over the last, what have we got, six years there of data as to how many special use permits were issued? And then you can see the different categories for which those special use permits were issued. And again, trying to think about where are the areas where special use permit is clearly appropriate and applicable, you know, live entertainment, all that kind of stuff, and where are some of those where maybe a special use permit isn't, isn't necessarily needed in order to protect the public interest and, and also help streamline and speed time to, to business for those who are starting a business here in KCK. So the intent of the recommended changes that you'll hear before you tonight, really it's a code that's simpler, more flexible, more responsive to those needs of entrepreneurs that does support small business formation and reduces regulatory barriers and unnecessary complexity in, in our regulatory framework, creating more attractive and interesting places for people to be through the, through the sign code. It did address specific pain points that were raised by entrepreneurs and developers who participated in the task force. So this was not staff-driven, this was really people that are on the ground doing the work, saying, these are the issues that we think need to be addressed and would create a better outcome for all involved. And then lastly, again, creating more buy-ride pathways that reduce burden on staff and applicants while also speeding the approvals. So with that kind of overview, I'm going to hand it over to Council Wendy Green, and she's going to walk through the home occupation regulation section.
Good evening, Commissioners. Wendy Green, Deputy Chief Counsel for the Unified Government. So if we go ahead to the next slide, pretty much it was just two ordinances that we needed to change. The first is just the definition of the home occupation, and then the second, it clarifies the conditions under which, the conditions that need to be met for a buy-ride home occupation permit to be issued without that use of the special permit. So that would be with signage, employees, equipment, accessibility and parking, and the inventory and storage. So if we could go to the next slide, this is the definition for the home occupation under 27340, and the only thing that we did was remove that last sentence that says that you can only employ members of the immediate family residing at the premises. And that opened it up to allow other people to be able to be employed there, and it made it so it's not so limiting anymore. Next slide. And know your rights are not deceiving. That is very, very small print, and we are not going to go through it that way, but really that's the changes that we needed to make to 27609, and the next few slides will go through those changes individually. Next slide. So first is under 276091, and that's where we make it a buy-ride process rather than a special use process. So it changed it to where if you meet these certain sections, then the planning department will issue you your permit without you having to get a special use permit as long as the conditions under these next few sections under 27609 are met. And here, what is given to you, we need to make a slight change into that. At the end there where it says, shall require a special use permit if identified in section 2759, or 593, we need to change that. So what we would be asking you to pass would be adding other than subsection 27-593A12, because without that, the rest of it doesn't matter because 593A12 is the home occupation subsection. So we need to make sure that's included. Next slide. So first is the advertising of amendment notes. What we want to do is remove, remove the confusing sign language. First of all, it says no exterior advertising, and it can include your address, but you could include your phone number, but you can't have any advertising anyway. So we were going to change that reference to a telephone number. After it was submitted, there was more discussion in the task force, and they said, well, why can't they have signs? We allow residences to have signs up in front of them if they want. We can't really tell you what you can and can't, we can't regulate content anyway, so why can't we let them have a sign? So what we would like to submit and what we would ask your approval for would be what's up there is to allow two, up to two signs advertising the business of no more than 18 by 24 inches on the property. So we would allow them to have up to two signs. Next slide. So what we would do with this amendment is, again, replace immediate family with persons, and we would balance out the parking concerns so we're not overburdening the neighborhood with parking. So persons residing on the premises and up to two non-resident employees can participate in the home occupation. Offstring parking must be provided for any non-resident employee driving a vehicle to the property. Again, we're assuming if you, you're already taking care of all your parking needs for people that are already living there anyway. So if you're going to have non-resident employees, then you have to make sure you have parking for them as well. Next slide. And that one doesn't have any changes, so we can pass right over that one. Next slide. So this one, we're worried about having heavy equipment in your residential neighborhoods. So we want to make sure that if you're going to have it there, it's got to be very temporary, so you could have it there for loading or unloading, but you're not going to store it there overnight. But we do want to make sure if you got to have a delivery for, to do your business, then that's okay, just no unloading, unloading only, no storage overnight. Next section, please, or next slide, please. So for this one, we want to make sure that it's okay that people can have appointments, you can have more than one person in there at a time, and it's going to address really traffic and parking concerns, we think. So you could have customers and clients present on the premise by appointment only, and utilize offstring parking if feasible, and if offstring parking is not available, up to two groups of customers or clients can arrive on the premises separately, but there's no limit to how many pedestrian customers you can have in there. Again, we're just trying to address parking concerns that people may have with the loosening of these restrictions on home occupations. And next slide. So this one, there was a lot of concerns about people with home occupations and the fact that we weren't allowing them to have actual inventory on site. So this takes that concern away, and it says that no inventory or storage or commercial activity may be visible or otherwise detectable from the street. So they can have inventory on the premises, they can store it there. We just don't want the neighborhood to know that there's a lot of commercial activity going on at that property. We don't want it to be completely obvious, maybe other than whatever sign they might put out in front of their house and the occasional person going up. So we, we don't want there to be a lot of disruption for these buy-ride home occupations. Next slide. So what, again, what we were recommending, what the business task force recommended were these amendments with those oral amendments that were mentioned, and we took a lot of time to discuss these, went back a couple times on the vehicles, the storage of the vehicles. Did we need to increase the weight requirement? Did we need to leave it the same? What did we need to do about employees? Should we keep it at immediate family? Should we allow non-family? What about the parking concerns? So this wasn't just a one-meeting, two-meeting discussions. This took a few meetings, and there was some deep thought that went into this by the members of the task force, and that's why they did recommend that these changes be made.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. So going to staff, do you need two adoption of ordinances, one for the sign and one for home oc?
Yes.
All right.
We can go into the sign portion if you'd like for the presentation, if you want to do that before the vote.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay. Next slide, and...
Are you going to be doing both the screen?
I believe Alyssa is doing the next.
All right.
Are you? Yep. Want to use my copy of the... Okay. There you go. Sorry.
Look at all your tabs. Where are we here?
So just a little bit of background information, sign, you know, there are a lot of different types of signs out there, and we really got into many discussions about these in the task force. A lot of the things that came up, too, as we dug deeper into, how do we allow more flexibility for businesses and limit the amount of variances that we get because we see a lot of variances with signs, especially when it comes to number and, and size of signs? But also still consider safety concerns, you know, making sure that you're not blocking traffic signals or that windows aren't being, you know, 100% covered by signs and you can't see in. And then the other thing that I think just is good to keep in the back of your mind, too, as we go through these changes, is that, you know, how much can we regulate via the code? And how much of this is something that we can enforce? Because we only have so much capacity on either end, right? Especially with only one zoning enforcement officer. But again, we looked at quite a few different sign types, and we'll go into those here. So next slide. So first off, one of the challenges that we heard from large developments is that they, you know, a lot of them thinking about Home Field, Margaritaville, Atlas Nine, right? They have a lot of different signage. A lot of these signs are often larger than what's allowed in the code, and a lot of times they come at the very end of development and they're trying to, trying to squeeze all of these signs through. And, you know, they have to go and get these variances now because the signs are too big. So we've had this section of our code that we haven't utilized quite adequately, and it's the master sign plan. So essentially what this does is it allows a developer to put together a package of signage that as long as they have their standards set within this master sign plan, that will allow them to move forward more easily. We haven't been doing that, and the specific language in the code was that you had to submit this as part of your preliminary development plan. So what our changes for this specifically are that we can submit it as part of a preliminary or a final, because what we heard from developers is that we're not ready at the preliminary plan stage to have all of our sign stuff in order. But if we submit it later on with a final, it's more likely to happen. That also allows them to avoid some of those variance scenarios. Next slide. So with illuminated signs, what you'll see on the left-hand side is currently what we have, so pretty restrictive in terms of controlling things like animation or movement of video, productions of images, not allowing mobile signs, those kinds of things. So what we're proposing now is that as long as you have, as long as your illuminated sign is not going to confuse or impact any kind of traffic signal or safety-related lighting, then it's not an issue. We don't really, we're not really going to be concerned about the fact that maybe something is animated. And I'll just say, we do have some, some things later on that we'll go over that does bring up time of day, but for this specifically, it's, let's only control things unless they're going to become a safety issue from a traffic perspective. So murals has been a pretty big discussion lately. I'm not sure if you noticed, there's quite a few going up in different neighborhoods. So previously, murals did require a permit because they were considered a sign, and they also were not allowed to face a residential area or be adjacent to a residential district. If they did, they would have to get a variance. We've had that in the past where I believe we had a mural that was put on the side of a park building, but it was facing a residential area, so it had to get a variance. So the proposed changes for murals is that we will not require a permit as long as they maintain all of the conditions that are currently in the code. So, you know, no obscenities, it has to be well-kept, you know, it can't be, you know, vulgar, all of those things, as long as they're maintaining it, they do not need a permit. However, the one change is that we said we would still keep that they can face a residential district, but they would still need to have a variance for that, just depending on the neighborhood, you know, it's being able to still maintain a little bit of control over residential area. Okay. So next is projecting signs. So previously, this did require a permit. So we're keeping essentially the language in the code around what is required for a projecting sign, but if you, if the sign is installed by a bonded and insured installer, we're saying that you no longer need to get a permit for that as long as you're following everything in the code and it's installed, you know, by a bonded and insured company. And I know this is a lot, and it's a little all over the place, so if you have any questions, please feel free to stop. Next is A-frame signs. So in our code, we have temporary signs. Those most often are the things that you see, which are like real estate signs or maybe even right now, selection season, you see a lot of those yard signs everywhere. So temporary signs, again, are 90 days or 30 days?
It depends on what materials it made, or wood, or it has a metal frame that's 90, but if it's still wire, it's put in the ground, it's 30 days.
Right. So, but temporary being allowed by right for that specific duration because it's temporary. Currently, that has not been the case in the code for A-frame signs. You see those a lot when it comes to restaurants, folks in a store trying to advertise a special for the day, that kind of thing. So the suggestion here for the change is to consider these like a temporary sign because when it comes down to it, you take these in right at the end of the day. So as long as they're within ADA compliance, they're within 10 feet of a sidewalk, they're not blocking that four or five-foot pathway for ADA, it would be allowed by right. All right. Another hot topic that came up is feather and inflatable signs. And feather signs, you'll see the example there on the slide. They're kind of feather-like, they usually kind of wave in the breeze, and then inflatable signs, most notably, you'll see blowups, right? Whether that's a Wavy R man or maybe it's something else. So we looked at the definition of these in the code specifically. Feather signs are a little bit more specific. Obviously, air-filled signs is sort of the definition we have for anything that's inflatable. We see these all over the place in KCK without permits currently, even though technically they are not allowed, not feathered. they are not allowed, not feather signs, but inflatable signs. However, when it comes to an enforcement standpoint, trying to enforce all of the inflatable signs in KCK could become pretty time-consuming from a staff perspective. And it's, at the end of the day, we have to think about, you know, the impact of what these might do in the grand scheme of things. So the discussion with these two in particular kind of came up to be the same, which is that we would allow them by rights as long as they have ADA compliance. And then you'll see too, one oral amendment that didn't make it in originally is that feather and inflatable signs are allowed on paved sidewalks in the public right-of-way if an ADA-compliant clearance with a four-feet can't be maintained. And so that would be the change to both of these two sign types. So that was a lot. What questions do you have for me?
You ready for questions?
Let's go for it.
All right. So murals, any restrictions on size or anything like that?
No. Right now, I mean, most murals are just whatever the size of the building is, right? So we haven't, you know, we didn't put any descriptions, I think specifically about size of mural. It was just that they would be allowed as long as they're maintained.
Allowed by permit or allowed by right?
Allowed by right, as long as they're maintained. They would have to get a variance if they are facing a residential district.
So no, no review of any of it? So, I mean, what determines what you think could be obscene, or vulgar, or not in compliance with the neighborhood? I mean, it seems like a, seems like a can of worms, or...
Yep. I mean, that, that discussion has come up. I think that's something that we would like guidance on. I know we had a lot of discussions in the task force about that. You want to go ahead, Wendy?
Wendy Green, Deputy Chief Counsel, pretty much vulgarity and obscenity, they are the only things that we can regulate. So, and that really much deals with the wording.
I was going to say, because what determines that? Because, you know, I mean, I don't want to get into a pornography discussion, but what defines what it is?
More the language, the cuss words, things like that nature. We wouldn't be able, like, the messaging, that we cannot regulate. So when it says vulgarity and obscenity, they're specifically referencing the types of cuss words and my...
You don't have a list of them, do you?
Do not.
Because the ones in some household may be less than some in other households.
Right. Do you know if there's like, does it point you anywhere in the code on that, or does it specifically say?
No, but Mike Farley, Lou Counsel, I guess, I do want to point out that the, the change in the language, whether a mural is permitted or not, does not affect the sort of review of the First Amendment that we're talking about here. So planning staff would not have done that...
That's fine.
...previously anyways.
Okay. And talking about temporary signs, 90 days, so that way, you're talking about real estate signs. So what if it took longer than 90 days to sell someone's home, they have to remove their sign?
Yeah, we talked about this. One of the loopholes, I guess you could say, is if you take the sign in, right, you can always remove the sign and then put it back out or get an extension. But I don't know if we, if any of these changes directly impact that specific scenario. Michael, I don't know if you remember, but...
I mean, is that what's currently in operation? Because I don't know of anybody who takes the real estate sign down every night and puts it back up, or requests extensions, or anything like that to it, especially if they have a home that's difficult to sell.
Yep.
Right. Yeah, we, we don't, we're not increasing the length of time for temporary signs. So that's still 90 days.
That's always been the case.
And that has always been the case. Again, I would assume your question's coming down to, is that forced? And, and that, that is a different thing than what we're, I mean, it can be brought up, but that is different than what the code reads.
And then feather signs, again, is there any type of time limit, or they can just be indefinite? Like, go out and put a temporary or feather sign up every day, as long as you have your Liberty Tax Service or other companies like that that use a lot of those, you can do that.
Probably have to check to see how we worded that.
Right. So the feather signs, again, it's, they're considered the temporary signs as well. And the way the task force conversation went, it was, everyone was hoping that, you know, that they had that 90-day requirement, and if they're outside in the elements, they're going to start to look worn, and you don't want that to reflect on your business.
And that's when you were talking about, with reference to the material. So like, a real estate sign is typically aluminum or, or steel, whereas the feather sign's going to be canvas or something.
Correct.
And temporary election signs, things like that, are usually a laminated or corrugated material that typically was not going to survive much bad weather.
Correct.
Okay. Do you have a follow-up?
No, no follow-ups at this point. That probably addresses the difference in those.
That's all I have, but I'm going to go ahead and go to Commissioner Straws.
Yeah, I'll piggyback on the mural thing, but not really, because it'll be waxing poetically on something we probably don't control already. But somewhere in our code, we probably need to have neighborhood meetings or something of that nature, if somebody's going to put up a mural from a requirement perspective to make sure, like, we approve things that kind of meet the neighborhood, like, there's a beautiful one over in the Silver City area that meets that neighborhood and it speaks to that neighborhood. But that's, that's a soapbox moment. My other, my real question or comment was for, like, the wayfinding sign for businesses, since we just got through talking about home-based businesses and stuff like that, them being able to put signs in their yards. These signs, these directional signs that we're talking about, will not start to allow those home-based businesses to put, like, signs on the corners and right-of-ways from the city. Like, say somebody's got a business off a parallel, this doesn't allow them to start putting like, hey, my hair salon is at my house this way, or something like that, and that nature, even if they pick it up and take it down. I'm just asking them the question.
Wendy Green, Deputy Chief Counsel, that is correct. This, this does not allow them the right to do that.
Other questions? Commissioner Jones?
So given some of the comments and questions that, that I just heard, then, I think this begs the question, what is the enforcement plan? Is it the same as if, you know, with or without these amendments, or what have you all discussed with regard to enforcement?
Alyssa Marcy, planning. Yeah, and the thing that we were trying to, I think, really be able to meet in the middle about is that we understand that currently our enforcement resources are significantly lacking. That is just the reality. And we know that, for example, people are putting out balloon signs at free will without, you know, even though they currently under the code are not allowed and things like that. So the, a lot of this discussion in the task force was, okay, well, let's think about this from a business perspective, and then let's think about the impact of these types of things. Are we really going to be able to, to enforce every inflatable R man in KCK? Probably not with our current staff. So part of these changes are supposed to allow things more by rights, but still are tied to, if you do not meet these conditions, we do have that ability to then give you a violation for, for not, you know, upholding your ends. So it, it doesn't mean that they're allowed to do things without any consequences at all, but I think we do have to acknowledge that we can't enforce our way out of this problem.
Commissioner Jones, do you have a follow-up, or...
No, I'm just going to simply comment, hopefully the, the advantages will outweigh the disadvantages. So I know enforcement, I figured that might be an issue, but thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other questions for staff? All right, I think that's all. So at this time, you need two motions for two different ordinances, correct? So at this time, I'll entertain a motion to adopt ordinance amending the sign code. Commissioner Miller?
Move to approve the sign code ordinance changes as presented by staff.
All right, thank you. Motion to, motion made to approve the sign ordinance changes as presented by staff, made by Commissioner Miller. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Ward. Any discussion? Saying none, roll call, please.
Straws?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Armstrong?
Aye.
Beth?
Aye.
Ernst?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Easterwood?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries nine to zero.
All right, thank you. And now I'll entertain a motion to approve the ordinance amending home occupations as accessory and special uses as presented by staff. Mr. Miller?
Move to approve the ordinance on home occupations and accessories as presented by staff.
All right, thank you. Motion to approve that ordinance made by Commissioner Miller. Is that a second, Commissioner Jones?
Yes, it is.
Thank you. Any discussion? Saying none, roll call.
Straws?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Armstrong?
Aye.
Beth?
Aye.
Ernst?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Easterwood?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries nine to zero.
All right, thank you. Thank you all.
Okay, we're done with the report section, so we will move on to the consent agenda for this evening. Thanks for waiting. So the, any application receiving a unanimous vote of recommendation by the Planning Commission will appear on the consent agenda of the Unified Government Board of Commissioners. Unless there's a request to remove an item from the consent agenda by the applicant, commission, or other interested parties, the Planning Commission's recommendation will be adopted. The consent agenda is heard at the beginning of the meeting at 7:00 PM. The Planning Commission will also have a consent agenda this evening. The consent agenda is the first part of the agenda. Items on the consent agenda are final plots, final plans, or file special use permit renewals that have received a staff recommendation to approve. Unless there is a request to remove an item from the consent agenda, the staff recommendation on all items on the consent agenda will be adopted by the Planning Commission at one time. I will read a list of items on the consent agenda, and when I have, I, when I have completed the list, the chairman will ask if there's any request to remove items. This is your time to use the raise-your-hand feature, be recognized, and request that an item be removed from the consent agenda if you do not agree with the staff's recommendation. If you are on the consent agenda, please come to the microphone, state your name and address, and the items that you want to remove from the consent agenda. The Planning Commission is required to disclose contacts about any item on the Planning Commission agenda. Before each item, I will ask if any contacts have been made, and members of the commission will be asked to disclose those contacts. Please note that your opinions will be forwarded to the governing body for their consideration and making a final decision on Thursday, October 30th, 2025, at 7:00 PM. I will now read the items on the consent agenda. The consideration of September 8th, 2025, City Planning Commission minutes. SP 2025-056, Crystal Voth with Alice Lynn Consulting LLC. Special use permit renewal for the continuation of a short-term rental at 999-0 Hollingsworth Road. SP 2025-057, Larry and Christie Pretty. It is a special use permit renewal for the continuation of keeping chickens, ducks, and goats at 3425 North 87th Street. SP 2025-058, Adam Reynolds, a special use permit renewal for the continuation of a short-term rental at 4443 Eaton Street. SP 2025-059, Tita Legrimas. It is a special use permit renewal for the continuation of a 10-day transfer facility of, for non-regulated dot hazardous materials and hazardous waste material at 1620 South 45th Street. SP 2025-061, Jessica Betts, a special use permit renewal for a short-term rental at 749 Locust Avenue. And PR 2025-022, Khalid Banday, a final development plan for a building tenant conversion to a convenience store and gas canopy addition at 2135 South 34th Street. The items that I've just read are on the consent agenda. At this time, does any member of the commission wish to disclose any contacts on any of the items?
No. Commissioner Armstrong?
Yes, I had contact with UG Commissioner Ramirez over PR 2025-022.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Please include the following items as part of record for all items on the agenda tonight. One, the city has currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations, the official zoning map for the area in question, the city has currently adopted master plan for the area in question, the staff report and attachments dated October 13th, 2025, the application and other documents, plans, pictures, and maps submitted by the applicant in furtherance of the case, the notice in the Y-Echo for the special use permit, change of zones, and master plan amendments, and the notices to property owners. The commission will approve, approve, vote to approve these items in one vote unless someone requests that an item be removed from the consent agenda.
All right, thank you. So anyone on the commission, would you like to have anything removed from the consent agenda for consideration? Commissioner Armstrong?
Yes, I'd like to have PR 2025-022 removed.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? All right, is there anyone in the audience that would like to have an item pulled off of the consent agenda for review? Anyone online? Janie Harris? Go ahead and unmute yourself, please.
Yes, I don't, I don't agree with the development that's going to be happening there right, right across the street from my mom's house.
I have no idea who your mom is or where her house is located.
Nellie Gross, the owner of the property at 2025.
I need to know a case number, ma'am. Which one, which case or which person?
Oh, it's, it's 2025-022.
All right, that's the one that's already being pulled from consent agenda, so we'll be hearing that case shortly.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, thank you. At this time, I'll go ahead and, I'm sorry, I've got Karen Sheeby, Shyby?
Sorry about that, took me a minute to unmute.
That's okay.
Yes, on zero, I believe it was 25, the one that's on 45th Street, the hazardous materials, just have some questions about that one, and what...
So you would like to have it pulled from consent?
Yeah, just to discuss a little bit and kind of see a little bit more about that. That's down the street from the farm school.
Okay, all right. We'll, we'll have that pulled off, and we'll be hearing that shortly.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, anyone else? All right, at this time, Rose, we have PR 2025-022 and a special use application 2025-059. Okay? At this time, I'll go ahead and entertain a motion to approve the remaining items on the consent agenda. Mr. Jones?
I make a motion to approve the remaining four cases on the consent agenda.
All right, thank you. Motion to approve the consent agenda minus the items that have been removed made by Commissioner Jones. Is there a second? Commissioner Ernst?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. Any discussion? Saying none, roll call, please.
Straws?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Armstrong?
Aye.
Beth?
Aye.
Ernst?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Easterwood?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries nine to zero.
All right, thank you. These items will be heard once again at the Board of County Commissioners meeting, and that meeting will be held when, Rose?
October 30th.
On October 30th?
At 7:00 PM.
At 7:00 PM in this, in the same chambers. Thank you all. If your item was approved on the consent agenda, there's no reason for you to stay on the call or in the chambers unless you just would like some more entertainment. So thank you.
Okay, we're continuing with the items that were pulled off the consent agenda, so we'll start with PR 2025-022, Khalid Banday.
Sorry, wouldn't that be the special use application first?
Uh, if you want me to, I was just going by the order that they were pulled off.
All right. It'd just be easier for me if we start at the top of the agenda.
I'll do that one then. So that, the, that one would be SP 2025-059, Tita Legrimas. It is a special use permit renewal for the continuation of a 10-day transfer facility for non-regulated dot hazardous materials and hazardous waste at 1620 South 45th Street.
All right, thank you. Is the applicant in the audience?
Tita is not.
Okay. All right, let me see if I can find her. I don't see her name. All right, there she is. Okay. Mr. Legrimas, I've got you queued up, ready to speak. I need you to unmute yourself, please. Give us your name and address and tell us about your project. I see that you're unmuted. I just need you to go ahead and give us your name and address and tell us about the project. Hey, go ahead and try to unmute yourself one more time. All right, I see that you're unmuted. All right, I see that you're unmuted. Go ahead and give us your name.
I heard something for a second.
I was gonna say, ma'am, are you there? Are you in a capacity that you're able to present on her behalf about the project or answer questions? Ma'am, you might want to try to log back on to the system and see. I've got, I see your hand, and I've got you ready to speak. I just, we just cannot hear you. Okay, go ahead. I'm gonna go let you go ahead. If you would, please, give us your name and address.
Okay, so I'm Ashley Harrell. The business address is sixteen twenty South Forty-Fifth Street, K C K. We are a ten-day transfer facility. We have waste as specified in the application that we, um, have transported in, and it stays at the look for no more than ten days. At that point, then it's transferred out to the disposal facility.
All right, and you've had this, you've had a special use permit for the last several years. Is this, all right? And that-
This is our third renewal. Yeah.
All right, third renewal, so your last one just expired just actually last week.
Yeah.
All right. Anything new that's going on at that facility or anything like that that we need to discuss?
No, sir.
All right, if you just have a seat, we're gonna go ahead and listen to the public and see if we have any additional questions. Uh, I'm sorry, before we do that, any questions from the commissioners before we go to public? All right, not seeing any. So, anyone in the audience want to speak to this case in favor or in opposition or to get some questions answered? I know we have somebody in the audience. Ma'am, do you want to go ahead and come on up first? Yes, ma'am. Go ahead. Your name and address.
My name is Joanne Hanson. My address is five three O Terrace Trail East, Lake Quavira, Kansas. We're the owners of the building. They've been in this facility for, oh, almost seven years now, and we have had zero incident with them. Um, every time we've checked the building, it is in perfect condition. The fist, the material is stored in the trailers. It's not in the building. So we've had no problems. So we'd like to keep them as tenants, and they've been good for Wyandotte County.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? When I go back to my, Ms. Shyby, did you want to speak to this case? This is the one you asked to have pulled off the consent agenda.
Oh, sorry, hold on. There I go. I think I'm unmuted.
Yeah, I can hear you. I just need to drop with your name and address, please, and, and ask any questions.
Yes, Karen Shyby, Kansas City, Kansas. I was just trying to understand what it was, because when I see non-regulated and hazardous material in the same sentence a few blocks from a farm school, it's just kind of a common question that comes to my mind. So I'm assuming this is all stored indoors. There's nothing that's exterior to a building. That's one question. Um, as far as that goes, I didn't realize it had been there, so evidently there's a good history there, so that's all fine with me. I was just trying to understand when I saw those two words together, you know, what was going on. Considering, like I said, the farm school's so close.
All right, so you'd like to know the type of material, uh, on the facility and what type of storage methods?
Yes, that'd be great.
All right, anything else?
Nope, that should do it, and thank you.
You bet. Thank you. All right, anyone else, online or in person? Seeing no one, we'll go ahead and call you back up, please, if you wouldn't mind. Can you tell us the type of material that you're working with there and the type of storage methods you have on site?
So it is specified in the application, and all three of those types of waste is how D O T classifies them. So it's called out by how the Department of Transportation requires us to call them out.
Okay, for the public, can you go ahead and can you, can you, are you able to address that or do you know?
Um, so like, non-hazardous waste, oils, things like that, hazardous waste can be paint, solvents, things like that. No waste is stored outside. It's all kept in the back of a truck or in a trailer.
Okay.
So it doesn't even, it doesn't, it's not even stored inside the building.
Okay, so it's stored inside a truck?
Mm-hmm, inside truck.
That's an enclosed.
Yes, inside, mm-hmm, inside box trucks or trailers.
All right, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. At this time, we'll go ahead and close the public portion of the meeting. We'll go back, or, I'm sorry, we will go to staff and get their comment.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman, Byron's White Planning Department. Staff recommends approval, subject to the conditions outlined in the staff report.
All right, thank you. Any questions for staff? Seeing none, I will stand for a motion when ready.
Commissioner Ward.
Commissioner Ward, go ahead.
Make a motion to approve special use permit two zero two five dash zero five nine, subject to staff stipulations and comments.
Thank you. Motion to approve special use application twenty twenty-five dash zero five nine made by Commissioner Ward. Is there a second? Commissioner Jose, uh, sorry, Commissioner Straws, guys, the second? Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Straws?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Armstrong?
Aye.
Beth?
Aye.
Ernst?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Easterwood?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries nine to zero.
All right, thank you. This will be heard once again on October thirtieth, seven P M. before the Board of Commissioners. Thank you all.
Okay, now we'll go to P R twenty twenty-five dash zero two two, Khalid Banday, a final development plan for a building tenant conversion to convenience store and gas canopy addition at twenty-one thirty-five South Thirty-Fourth Street. Is Khalid Banday or any of his team here?
I've got Gerald Menifee online. Are you presenting on behalf of Mr. Banday?
Yes, I am.
All right, go ahead, please, name and address, and tell us about this project.
Yes, my name's Gerald Menifee. I'm the project engineer. And my address is six eight one one North Michigan, Gladstone, Missouri, six four one one eight. Um, basically, we're taking an existing commercial site, and we're taking part of a existing, uh, building, which is about fifty-four hundred square feet. And we're taking twenty-five hundred of the proposed square feet as a convenience store. This is a remodel of an existing space in which we have, or there is, or has been a sports bar in the past, as a la, a last tenant. The remaining retail space is occupied by a donut shop and a liquor store. A new canopy is to reconstruct over two new fuel pumps serving four vehicles. A new trash dumpster enclosure is proposed for construction at the southwest corner of the site. No other major changes except for new striping are anticipated. There are fifteen parking spaces required, fif, twenty-four spaces are provided, with an additional two accessible spaces, making it total twenty-six spaces totals. The hours of operation will be twenty-four hours. Um, it's essentially a typical convenience store only going into a strip center uh, situation, using an existing space and, and occupying it with a convenience store inside the building and adding the island out front for fuel. Um, I don't know what else I can tell you about it, but you can feel free to ask me any questions.
All right, thank you very much. Any questions from the commission to this applicant? Commissioner Armstrong, you had it pulled. Is there any questions?
Um, I don't have any questions. I know that, uh, when I spoke to Commissioner Ramirez, there was some, um, community members that were wanting more information about the project, so they were wanting more, wanting it held over, um, so that they could learn more information about it.
All right, thank you. Anyone in the audience wants, I'm sorry, Commissioner Ernst?
Sorry. Um, to the petitioner, that is an extremely small parking lot. Uh, you couldn't get stuck getting donuts, which I don't do anymore, but I used to. Um, I'm glad to see it's going in the end, because in the middle, the liquor store would not be good for the traffic, but I don't understand how you're gonna fit that all in there. I assume this has worked out, because Mr. Banday has been very responsible throughout all of his alt, altercations with us. Uh, but has, has this been well thought out? It's, sadly, I just have to ask it, because I'm extremely familiar with that area.
All right, thank you. All right, we're gonna go back to Mr. Menifee and get an answer.
Well, I mean, we're dealing with a certain size lot here. And has certainly some restrictions on it, but based upon the space available, we think we've utilized the space as better, as best it can be outside the existing building without changing anything significantly. We have pushed the parking to the, uh, left side of the site. Most of the parking, and we still have three spaces on the east side. And we have put a handicap bill, uh, a handicap, uh, or accessible area on the east side as well. And I think we've maximized the ability to use this, this space as well as possible. And we've even exceeded the parking requirements, which was fifteen, and we're at twenty-four with two handicap spots.
Commissioner Ernst, any follow-up?
I'm going to accept their past history. Uh, I'm surprised there isn't anyone to speak against it, but I'm not going to be the one to do it if they didn't bother.
All right, thank you. Mr. Menifee, and you are contained on the, the same piece of property that, I mean, you're not moving anything around on any other properties?
No, no, it's just with all within this property that's happening, within the boundaries of it.
All right, thank you. All right, I'm gonna go to the audience now. Janie Harris, Ms. Harris, go ahead and give us your name and address, please. Janie Harris?
Um, fifty-three thirty-three Hagaman, Kansas City, Kansas, six six one oh six.
Yes.
Um, so it looks to me like on the blueprints that I was sent that my, um, mom's property is gonna be affected, and they're gonna take, you know, encroach, I don't know how, how many feet onto my mom's property in order to, um, make that happen. And, and a, a lot of the adjacent properties as well, it looks like on the blueprint that they're gonna take out, you know, fifteen, twenty feet of the fronts of the properties in order to, uh, make room for the canopy for the gas station. And, um, my, you know, I'm, I'm just supposing the mess, but on top of that, it, is, uh, my mom gonna get paid for the property that they're gonna be taking out of the front of, of her, um, of front of her property?
Well, we don't know that that's, that's occurring, so we're gonna, we're gonna get an answer to that.
Uh, well, we look at the blueprint, it, it shows that.
Well, I don't know that it shows any such thing.
Okay.
But we're gonna ask about it. Anything else you wanted to, do, anything else you want me to ask? You want me to find out? I, I asked the question of the applicant if they were gonna be encroaching over any other pieces of property, and they said no.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Anyone else want to speak to this case? Okay, Mr. Menifee, I'm gonna go back. I'm gonna talk to you again about regarding Ms. Harris's comments about her mother's property. Are, are you gonna be encroaching over any boundary lines or taking of any other property other than what is contained on the parcel and what you plan to build?
Uh, just within the parcel, we plan to build, and there is no encroachments or no in, no takings of any sort outside of that uh, parcel itself. What she may be referring to is there are a couple long dimensions uh, that are shown on the, uh, if you look at the main sheet, the C one sheet, uh, one hundred and forty-eight long on the right side of the, of the site, and on the south side, there's a two hundred and four-foot-long dimension leader there, and they both are in, they're into the, exist, the side, uh, the other properties only for dimensional purposes. So that may be, if they're not sophisticated enough, they might think that's a taking.
All right, but, uh, again, just going on record, you're not moving anything over onto anybody's other site other than the one that you're working on, correct?
Correct.
All right, just wanted to clarify. Anybody else want to speak before we close the public portion of the meeting? All right, we're gonna go and do that, and we're gonna go to staff and get their comment. And would you address the property boundaries?
Byron's White Planning Department, yes. So as far as the actual parcel, it is the parcel that has D's on the hill, or big D's on the hill, which were this tenant conversion's going to exist. Liquor store, you have Hannah's Donuts. Those are the three tenants that are in that space, in that strip center. So nothing is going outside the power, the parcel of this property. Um, so to answer the individual's question related to building anything else elsewhere outside of the property, that's not happening. Nothing on Thirty-Fourth Street. Nothing on steel. Nothing's going on with anything, any construction. The canopy will be in front of where Big D's on the Hill is, between the median, that is, your ingress, egress, out on the Thirty-Fourth, in the building. So again, there's nothing going outside the parcel. There's sort of, you know, taking, there is no property encroachment of any kind. It's all self-contained on the parcel itself. To answer your question, Mr. Chairman?
Uh, I, you just provided the clarification that I wanted Ms. Harris to hear.
Okay. With that, staff recommends approval, subject to the conditions outlined in the staff report.
All right, thank you. Any questions for staff? Commissioner Armstrong?
Um, I did have a question. I know in regards to, like, their, um, the parcels, but are there any, like, businesses within the strip mall already that are being displaced because of this renovation or this?
The existing tenant space, which is Big D's on the Hill, that's the only tenant that is being, I wanna call it, switched from what it was, sports bar to a convenience store. The other existing retail space that are east and that's north in that center are not being displaced. It will remain.
Any other questions for staff? If not, I'll entertain a motion to- Commissioner Armstrong?
Um, I would like to make a motion to hold over for thirty days, so that way the community has more information in regards to the displacement of our, um, the changing of Big D's on the Hill.
All right, motion for a holdover made by Commissioner Armstrong for thirty days for, uh, can you state, again, state your reason?
The community is wanting more information, um, just because Big D's is being changed, um, or they're viewing it as displaced. Um, so that's why I wanted to hold it over for more community conversations.
And do you know why none of the community has shown up tonight to express any of those concerns to us?
I am not sure of that, no.
All right. Is there a second to the motion for a thirty-day holdover?
Chairman, quick question. Would it be better to have a neighbor meeting for the applicant to hold, to have this conversation?
I'm sorry, say it again.
Would it be better to have a neighbor meeting for the applicant to hold, the representative, Mr. Menifee, to have with the neighbors to talk about the project versus trying to maybe field twenty, thirty different questions by either coming to us or vice versa?
Is that what you're wanting, Commissioner Armstrong?
Yes.
You're wanting a thirty-day holdover for the applicant to hold a community meeting?
Yes, that, that's the word that I was needing. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Is there a second? Is that a second, Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
All right. Any discussion on the motion for a holdover? Commissioner Straws?
Don't they have to already have a community meeting before they get to us? Okay, Ernst, I see it. No, all right, all right, you ain't gotta, I just a question.
That was my earlier in the day exchange with Jeff.
Okay, I don't know what you're looking at when you're waving to it, Commissioner Straws. Are you waving to me?
I was waving at Commissioner Ernst, shaking his head to me, no, that they don't. So he was answering my question as I was asking it.
Yeah, so I think he got that answered a little earlier as well.
Yes.
All right, other discussion on the motion for a holdover? Did you have any other comments, Steph?
Byron? Just a clarification from Commissioner Armstrong. The, simply, with, for clarification, with the fueling pumps, the fueling pumps is what's necessitating a final development plan, not the actual change of tenant leaving to another tenant conversion. The tenant conversion itself would be allowed by a right to exist without going through any planning entitlement. But the reason why they're coming through an F, for an F D P, a final development plan, is because they're adding fuel canopy, a fuel canopy and two pumps. So I just want to make that clear.
Thank you, that, that, uh, um, thank you for that information.
All right, any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call on the motion for a holdover for thirty days.
Straws?
No.
Ward?
No.
Armstrong? Armstrong?
Aye.
Beth?
No.
Ernst?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Easterwood?
Uh, aye.
Mueller?
No.
Miller?
Aye.
Okay.
Actually, five to four in in favor. Is that consistent with your count? Five in favor and four against?
Yep, I have that. So motion fails. I believe, or.
The leave council, the motion fails because it failed the Regis simple majority.
All right. At five, five to four, the simple majority is not.
If if I'm following correctly, there were four in favor of the motion.
Five in favor.
Oh, I'm sorry, there was.
Five in favor, four against.
Okay, I I apologize. Commissioner Easter was got garbled. I marked it down wrong. Okay, five in favor, so yes, simple majority.
It passes.
It passes, yeah.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Easter. And Commissioner Easter, I want to clarify, your vote was in favor of the motion to hold over.
Correct.
All right, thank you. All right, motion uh passes, and so this will be held over for thirty days.
Okay. Sorry, just writing that down. Okay. So that wraps up the consent agenda. Uh, we can move on to the non-consent agenda. Our next case is COZ two thousand and twenty-five dash zero two-two. Daryl Rakowski is a change of zone from AG Agricultural District to R-one Single Family District for residences at twelve-five-two-five Leavenworth Road. Does anyone on the commission have any contacts to disclose on this app, on this application?
No.
All right.
Mr. Rakowski, are you in the audience? Crystal Voth, are you presenting on behalf of the applicant?
Hi, good evening, Chairman. Yes, I am. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, I can. Go ahead, please.
All right, great. Thank you so much, um, staff and planning commission. Yes, this is a request to rezone the property located at one-two-five-two-five Leavenworth Road from the existing agricultural zoning district to the R-one Single Family District in order to build um some single family homes. When we originally approached the city about this, uh, we were looking at somewheres between six and seven lots, maybe a maximum of eight lots. However, based upon feedback that we've received from the city, um, and also the fact there's no sanitary sewer located there. The applicant, uh, Mr. Mr. Rakowski is actually looking at doing a maximum of four, and that includes one very large lot. This is at the, this time, of course, only for the the rezoning. We have not brought forth the plat yet. We wanted to make sure that the rezoning was able to go through. We do understand staff's concerns regarding traffic, which is one of the reasons that um we have talked about backing off on some of those lots. Um, and we've got some ideas in place to um help alleviate that. We do understand that when in when school is in session in the morning and in the afternoon, that roadway there, Leavenworth Road and one hundred and twenty-third street get backed up pretty well. Um, so like I said, we've got some plans to deal with that. We do understand that we may need some variances depending upon how the lot layouts are, but um, we would, of course, do everything we can to meet all of the zoning regulations to minimize the number of variances that would be needed. Other than that, I think everything else in the staff report, um, we agree with. We certainly appreciate your um consideration of this and request that you would recommend approval.
All right, I just have a question for you. You're requesting the rezoning of how many acres? I'm sorry?
Sorry, I've let me double check here. I don't want to give you the wrong.
Because it's a thirty acre parcel.
Correct. And we're just talking about the northern strip there along um Leavenworth Road. I want to say it's nine acres. Um, there should be an exhibit. We sent over an exhibit um to staff several weeks ago. Sorry, I'm looking through the staff report right now to see if it made it into your staff report.
I just want a clarification on the amount of acres that we're that we're looking at, and you're talking about a maximum of four lots, correct?
Um, yeah, we've, we've talked about reducing that. Um, th- those lots from, like I said, I think it was originally seven. It might have been a maximum of eight. Um, but yeah, now reducing it down to four. And I'm sorry, I don't see, I do see where one exhibit made it in.
Yes, nine, nine point zero four acres.
Nine point zero four acres. Okay, all right, that takes her, that takes her on my question. Other question, I'm sorry, did you have anything else you wanted to present?
Nope, that's it.
All right, thank you. Any other questions from the commission? All right, go ahead and open it up the audience. Anyone who wants to speak to this case in favor and opposition, go ahead and come forward or raise your hand if you're online. Yes, sir. Name and address, please.
Good evening, Neil Palmer, Kansas City, Kansas, um, twenty-six hundred North Hundred and Thirty-first Street. I'm not quite sure why a change of zoning is before you at this juncture. I'm not an expert in your code of ordinances, but I'd kind of like to walk through this real quick. Um, I'm just going to start with the application. Page three of the application says detailed outline of requested action. The applicant, Daryl Rakowski, is requesting a change of zone from AG Agriculture District to R-one Single Family District to build a single family home at one-two-five-two-five Leavenworth Road. As far as I know it, there is already a single family home at one-two-five-two-five Leavenworth Road. Now, you can discern from all the information here that um this is indeed an application to subdivide the property. Uh, two things of concern. One was already noted by staff about seven driveway entrances coming out on Leavenworth Road. Uh, that's a very hazardous situation any time of the day, not just when school is coming and going. Second thing is there's no sanitary sewer service to that property. Anybody in Piper knows that the sewer line running over to that lift station uh in Piper is already taxed. It's one reason that the Newberry Ridge, or not Newberry, but Woodbury Ridge hasn't been developed because the sewers all got to go west. There's no capacity left on that. Um, while the lots may be sufficient size to accommodate septic, I would question if the ground along the creek is going to perk, and I would ask that prior to any uh adoption of the ordinance that a perk test be performed down there to make sure that the adequate septic uh fields would be permissible. Um, the second thing in here is uh the go dot requires a ten-foot sidewalk along the West Property Line on Leavenworth Road. In the conversation here, it says, well, we'll think about that. Well, the city and made the school district put in a ten-foot sidewalk, and if we're not going to make everybody else put a sidewalk in along Leavenworth Road, why are we making anybody do it? Otherwise, you have a sidewalk that goes to nowhere. So it seems kind of contradictory what the go dot plan is on that. So I'm just going to jump real quick here in the essence of time. I'm going to go to Code of Ordinances, section twenty-seven-two-ten. A item two. Um, zoning amendments is appropriate for development of single lots with uses compatible. However, development of multiple lots subdivisions should be accomplished through a planned district pursuant to section twenty-seven-two-eleven. Twenty-seven-two-eleven, as we're well aware, says planned development district approval is a two-step process, approval of preliminary development plan filed by approval of a final development plan. And the submission requirements are preliminary development plan pursuant to section twenty-seven-two-twelve. Uh, traffic study or rezoning, a case of a land application that may substantially change traffic patterns or congestions is a requirement. Goes on, there's another dozen requirements. I'm going to skip over to talk about neighborhood meeting and notice at the end. Recommendation of the planning commission, you have three choices, recommend approval, conditional approval, or denial. And there's twelve criteria for you to consider, another nine, none of which has been submitted with this application. If this was to move forward as an approval, the code of ordinances, uh, the ordinance would state that uh, the governing body, which is the UG Commission, approves the preliminary development plans incorporated herein by reference of which there are none submitted, so I don't know how an ordinance can go through. Uh, one of the things here is uh notices required per twenty-seven-two-oh-three. Uh, I want to get to this. Yeah, posted notice on the sign, and I've been here talking about this before, where signs are posted. I do have have it on good authority, a sign was picked up. It may have been placed there. I didn't see it. But I traverse that street almost every single day, and I can tell you for the last twenty days, that sign hasn't been there. And the code states that the applicant shall make a good faith effort to maintain the sign for at least twenty days. And that means if the wind blows it away or gets chewed up or whatever, I actually walked the ditch to see if there was any remnants of it there. There is none. So uh, you know, I don't know how the community is supposed to find out about things if if you're not within the two-hundred-foot notice. And you're not following the agenda for this meeting, there's no way to know. Now, I know it's difficult with the staff shortage to go out and check to see if every sign got put up, right? This is a little unique. The applicant lives at that address. He surely noticed that his sign's gone. Um, on the neighborhood meeting, uh, I made an inquiry to planning and zoning department on September the eighteenth. I understand that the, from the minutes that the neighborhood meeting was held on the twenty-fifth, at the time I inquired, I was told that the neighborhood meeting letter had not been submitted yet. Uh, that is required fourteen days prior to the meeting. Uh, so apparently the, that wasn't in the hands of the people that needed to know. I would have liked to attended the neighborhood meeting and ask additional questions, but uh, seems to be a mix up there, so I I'm, I'm going to yield to everybody here, but I don't think the cart is behind the horse on this one, and I think you can't afford this for rezoning without having a preliminary development plan in hand and in conjunction with the ordinance, so with that, I thank you for your time.
All right, thank you, Mr. Palmer. Anyone else want to speak to this case in favor or in opposition? Please come forward or raise your hand if you're online. I'm going to go to Jason Rakowski. Online?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, Jason Rakowski, uh, one-four-six-one-six, West Ninetieth Street, Lenexa, Kansas. Um, just wanted to touch on a couple of things that were just said, um, just four. Um, so obviously, see my last name, Rakowski, I'm one of the people involved with the project. Um, the the sign's actually currently still there. It's just closer to the actual entrance of the uh of the home, so that sign's still there and has been there. Um, and I I do know.
When you say to the home, which home are you referring to?
The actual driveway for one-two-five-two-five, so kind of right where the cursor is. Um, it's, it's been there and is is still currently up there. Uh, whoever just spoke might have just been looking closer to the corner, uh, but it's just by the the entrance to the driveway.
And you put the, the cursor's not anywhere on the.
Okay, sorry. It's, well, anyway, right next to the driveway of the home, if you can see on the exhibit. Um, so it's, it's still, it's there and it's still been there. Um, and then just a couple other, I guess, little items. So we had heard about the uh, discussion with traffic, which is why we uh were looking to lower it to four lots. Um, and also, as we stated, this is just for rezoning, um, to to single family. This wouldn't be a master plan community or developments, would just be four single lots. Um, looking to do kind of higher-end homes in this, in this area, similar to what I built just to the south. Um, so, yeah, just obviously, I'm for it, but I'm part of the community, just wanted to, or part of the, the uh project, but wanted to just highlight that the sign is still there, and we definitely did have the notices out within time, held a meeting, we're all on for the, I believe, required hour. Um, and only two people showed up, the neighbor to the south, and then the additional neighbor to the south. Um, so, yeah, just wanted to just clear up a couple items that were just mentioned.
Did you want to clear up any of the other items with regard to the perk test, or has has any type of perk test been done on that property?
There has not. Um, as we stated, we're just going for a change of zoning, um, so I don't feel that's necessary at this point. To to just have the, a a zone change be done.
All right, anything else you wanted to clarify before we go back to Ms. Voth?
Sorry, just trying to think if there's anything else um that was stated. Oh, uh, I mean, more of a personal opinion than anything as, as someone who used to live uh in the house just to the south. Um, the traffic is obviously an issue for, you know, thirty minutes a day, uh, or, you know, an hour a day between pickup and drop off. Um, I would imagine that adding three driveways to Leavenworth Road and then, you know, one to North Hundred and Twenty-third um, would not change traffic in any way, uh, especially related to, as the previous person mentioned, you know, the community at Hundred and Thirty-first, Newberry, all the other communities that all, you know, have hundreds or close to hundred homes that are dumping out in just like two locations right there. Um, so I don't think adding four driveways, you know, three to Leavenworth Road and one to North Hundred and Twenty-third Street would impact traffic very heavily. Um, and then beyond that, uh, I think that's, I think that's the the main ends, and as I said, you know, we're obviously just going for trains, changes zoning right now.
Are you one of the developers of the project?
I'll be one, yeah, I'm the builder.
Okay, and as far as a requirement for sidewalks?
Oh, yeah, to to that point, um, there were sidewalks required by the school, which does make sense, but if you follow that entire rest of the road, there are no sidewalks on that side, on Leavenworth Road or North Hundred and Twenty-third Street. Um, I know because that was part of the reason that I moved from North Hundred and Twenty-third Street, the house just to the south. Uh, because, you know, having young kids, there was not going to be sidewalks. Um, and possibly weren't able to be, especially on the Hundred and Twenty-third Street side with the creek. Um, so there's, there's no, no, or sorry, there's no sidewalks currently from that corner. I think all the way up until the community that he mentioned, uh, I think it's Willow.
But Berry Ridge.
Yes, sorry. So there's, there's, there's zero sidewalks there, so personally, I I I think that if we added sidewalks, it would be even more confusing to have sidewalks for, you know, two thousand feet or whatever it is, and then no sidewalks for another, you know, however far, another mile. Uh, it'd be, and then with no sidewalks to the south because of that creek, I think it would be even more confusing than having to add them.
All right, any other clarifications you want to make?
I think that's everything at this point. I don't know if I missed any other points or anything, but again, kind of the goal for this is to uh build homes similar to what's just to the south, um, which is a home that just sold for, you know, one point two million. Um, so trying to capture a a basically a a market of homes that that isn't completely in the air right now. Uh, there's a lot of people who want to move up into the eight to, you know, eight hundred thousand plus uh, home price range, and there's not a ton of opportunity in Piper for that, especially in a location as prime as this where you're, you know, as we stated, half mile or mile to each school, mile to seventy, um, so just trying to kind of bring some additional quote-unquote luxury or high-end homes to the community, so. And with that, I, yeah, yield my time.
Just for clarification purposes, the property you mentioned, it sold for one point two million dollars. What was the amount of acres that went along with that property?
Uh, that was five.
That was five acres, so it does have a little bit more.
However, I'm, yeah, I'm, I'm currently building one for just south of one point one on point six-two acres. So the the appetite exists, it's just having the sites for it.
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
All right, Ms. Voth, did you have anything that you wanted to add?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify regarding the neighborhood meeting, and I think Jason maybe already touched on it, but um, we sent our letters out on September eighth for a meeting that was held on September twenty-fifth, which we obviously met our requirement there um, for the fourteen-day notice, and we submitted that to staff on October first, which again was was in accordance with the, with the regulation state, and the sign was absolutely posted. Um, as Mr. Rakowski stated, it is still there. Um, as Mr. Rakowski stated, again, we had, I believe, two people on that meeting. Um, and then just furthermore, regarding whether or not a preliminary development plan was required, you know, we reach out to staff anytime that we're getting ready to submit something um, to have a pre-application meeting to make sure we are submitting the correct items um, that need to be submitted, and we were instructed that a straight rezoning was allowed here. Um, which is why we didn't submit preliminary development plan, it just simply wasn't required for what we were trying to do. Um, regarding the septic systems, we understand that, you know, perk test or soil profiles will have to be done. That is something that will occur later on, you know, down the road when we're talking about actually building there. Um, right now we do just have the rezoning before you. We understand that there are other things that we will have to do and we will, of course, do those things. Um, you know, in the event, the unlikely event that it were impossible to install a septic system on one of those lots. Well, obviously that would take care of itself, right? But we don't expect that to be the case. There are several options. Um, and Wyandotte County has a sanitary code that is, um, comprehensive and we will follow it. So, um, just to make sure that, you know, we're on the same page there. We know these things will have to be done. We're prepared to do them. Um, to make sure that we put out the best product we, we can.
All right. Thank you. Was there anyone else in the audience who wanted to speak to this case in favor or in opposition? Okay, at this time I'm gonna go ahead and close the public portion of the meeting. And we're gonna go to staff and we'll get some additional clarifications.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Byron Toy Planning Department. So to the representative's point, Ms. Both, um, the neighborhood meeting, yes, was held properly in accordance with time. We did receive, uh, they had until the 29th of September, it actually had the neighborhood meeting, they held on the 25th. October 1st is the deadline to get that information into us, which is when we did receive it. So that box has been checked. They did pick up a sign to post on the property. That box has been checked. Um, typically when we're resuming to R1, we don't do a planned district. In rare instances, we do where there needs to be, for example, there's design guidelines or specific amenities that need to be placed, put in place that sometimes we do RP1. But in most cases, we've not seen lately, I'd say arguably in the past probably five years, uh, rezoning from Ag to Ag to RP1, you're seeing, you're seeing to R1. Or RP1 to R1 to remove a specific restriction in a subdivision.
Are you referring to sidewalks?
I'm just talking about in general, we're just straight rezonings.
Okay.
Blanket rezonings. Whether that be one lot or future 200 lot subdivision, you're seeing R1 single families. So we're not doing planned districts. With relation to sidewalks, uh, yes, we will, I mean, this will come in and do the plat that a sidewalk will be required on Leavenworth Road in conjunction with the subdivision ordinance and then also the good out mobility plan. Um, that is no different than what was proposed east of here, which is now a defunct project, but east of, uh, I think Piper Creek or Piper Prairie, Cameron, which elementary school K through two, east on 123rd, on east of Leavenworth Road on 122nd Street, why to sidewalk along Leavenworth Road that had no connection to the middle, or to the elementary school at that point, but we were putting, requiring them to put it in. Some will say that sidewalk to nowhere, but you have to start somewhere to make a link. So yes, we'll have a half mile or a mile between the sidewalk, that's at Woodbury, Piper to the west. And this, but we're getting a link because eventually they're gonna connect and then you have a full connection of arguably a mile and a half sidewalk on the south side of the street. So we will require that as part of the plat when it comes through, if it does come through. But right now we're just talking about a change of zone. They know that, the applicant knows that as far as the lot size they have to be in order to have, to earn or be on septic. And also along a major street being Leavenworth Road, having 300, 300 foot of frontage, um, five acres. So there's some things they gotta play around with. But again, if it's two lots, it works. If it's three lots, probably won't work. But if they don't, they'll come back before you guys have variance through the board of zoning appeals. And you can evaluate at that time whether or not you want to give that variance. If that's something you guys want to do as, as members of the board of zoning appeals. With that, staff recommends approval of the rezoning.
Okay, questions for staff?
Commissioner Warden.
Commissioner Ward, go ahead.
Is there a reason they have to do the rezone? Can they leave it as agriculture if they're just gonna build four lots?
So each for rezoning specific or Ag specific, Byron Toy Planning Department, for Ag specifically, each lot has to be minimum of five acres. So they won't have enough for two lots at 9.04. Now, if they wanted to change things around and get more area to the south, something can entertain, but as of right now, they only get, they'll only get one lot out of, one lot for five acres.
Okay. Other questions? Commissioner Beth?
So, I mean, I'm trying to get this straight. Do they need no preliminary plan or idea to rezone this for what they want? Uh, cause what they've submitted is not what they say they want to fail there. That's-
It's a concept, I understand that where there's seven lots, maybe reduced to three or four lots. I understand that, but if you're typically talking about where we see all the time, people tend to going from R1 to Ag. On a much lower scale, people are drawing, providing hand drawn maps to show what they want to do, have a house or. So in this case, simply rezoning this portion of land doesn't require the full scope like it would if you submit a final plat. If we're talking about plat, will require those, those, that infrastructure drawings, those plans to be provided to us. So Public Works can review, we can review. It's simply rezoning from Ag to R1. That what they provide is sufficient.
Well, my, my concern is, and, and I don't, I don't want to saddle people down the road with, with, with this because their, their request is, is perceived coming back and asking for variances for things that are right now are going to be self-imposed problems that, that they want to not conform with. Like sidewalks, lot sizes and, and such. Uh, and so once, once we pass the rezoning to it, then somebody else is gonna have to clean up a mess if they come back and say, well, we want variances for no sidewalk and other such things. I, you, you know, I, I would like to see an actual concept of what their plan is. Uh, as far as how many driveways are gonna be on Leavenworth Road? Uh, um, sidewalk, if the selling point is because there's a school close and they want to build nice houses for the school, you would think that we want a sidewalk too. So it, it, it just doesn't seem to make sense to me. And I don't want to, I don't want to do something that we're gonna have to come back later and give a bunch of variances for, or have a big discussion about, if you see what, what I'm saying.
Understand.
And I think that's, that's why I think uh, a preliminary idea or, or concept or whatever is important for the rezoning. Cause once it's rezoned, that's, that's it.
Byron to a planning department, I think the, the bigger crux is when that plat gets submitted. Because right now it is, we're resuming a boundary, nine acres of, nine acres of land. But if it was on Ag and they were trying to, you know, if it was already zoned Ag as it is today, and they're trying to come in for a plat, we're gonna have the same issue of sidewalks, we're on the same issue of, you know, septic or trying to have a lot that's four acres. Cause the others is five. So now we have to get a variance for that lot, that second lot that they're creating. That would still require variance. That would still, you know, they're creating their own hardship ultimately possibly by splitting that lot in half, knowing that it's gonna be smaller than what they need. So that's just the, that's if the, if the Ag's only was kept in place. So rezoning to R1 doesn't really change that. That's my personal opinion.
So Chair may, may ask a question.
I'm sorry, go ahead. Legal counsel.
Uh, Mike from legal counsel, uh, Mr. Troy, is it possible that the property could get a conditional rezoning in which they would have to meet additional requirements within a year, such as submitting other applications? Um, and one of the conditions of a conditional rezoning would be that the, the uh, ordinance publication itself would not be filed with Wyandotte Echo and therefore not effective?
Yes. I mean, we can put a condition in there saying that the plat has to be filed prior to the ordinance being published and go through this process. So yes, we can do a conditional rezoning.
Yeah, yeah. I'm, I'm just confused about this because what it looks like to me is they want to rezone to build a subdivision without a plan for a subdivision. Is what it looks like to me. It's, it's not like just rezoning nine acres. It's, uh, and that's where we run into when I'm reading the, in the, in the, um, packet about, uh, off streets to, for driveways. So there's not access onto Leavenworth Road and stuff. And that's, that's where I just want to make sure we're not gonna come back uh, and, and settle somewhat, someone with a bunch of variances in the future or something that probably should have been hashed out at the beginning and uh, if you see what I'm talking about, if it makes sense to you.
I under, Byron, so I planted her, I understand it.
I, I think the, the concern felt by Commissioner Beth and Commissioner Ward and, and to a certain degree myself is the, the location and it's a very visible, uh, intersection, uh, heading down to our schools. So it's one of those ones where I think we have, we're taking a little bit deeper dive into this one because of where it's at.
And to, to your both, to all three of your points, that was ex- expressed multiple times to the applicant, both by Public Works and Planning about the concern about having multiple drivers on Leavenworth Road and trying to condense it to where maybe you have three lots or lots. And so that was discussed, but again, that would be with the plat that we would be seeing, but-
And, and I have really problems with variances, given variances for things that are self-imposed problems.
Things that can be solved with design, divine solution. Understand.
Yeah, thank you.
Other questions for the app, uh, sorry, for staff? And you've given your recommendation, correct?
Yes.
Okay. It seems like it's been so long ago, I can't remember it. So, thank you. Any further questions for staff? Mr. Rakowski, I see that you've got your hand up, but public portion of the meeting's been closed, so won't be accepting any additional comment. All right. Seeing no additional comment for, or excuse me, questions for staff, I will, uh, entertain a motion when ready.
Can I ask a question real quick?
Go ahead. Commissioner Ward.
The conditional zoning, how does that work?
Commissioner, conditional approval, is that, is that what you said?
You can explain that to me real quick.
Yes, Commissioner Ward, so, um, conditional zoning would be that the, the entire change of zone process would go through up to Board of Commissioners. Um, it could be approved, the ordinance, you know, language of the ordinance would be approved and everything. Um, however, it would be held from publication until other certain conditions are met. And by statute, uh, the applicant would have a year to meet those conditions. Um, so again, those conditions could be a wide variety of things, including some of those of other applications.
And does staff set those conditions? Or does- interest of the conditions?
The, those, those conditions could be, could be set by, by anybody, any-
Okay.
Yeah, recommending by-
Do they have to be set tonight?
They not necessarily, but they would need to be set before the change of zone is ultimately approved by the Board of Commissioners.
Okay, so we'd have about two weeks? Is that correct?
Seven days from today, two weeks.
And then if, if the conditions were not met, then the conditional, conditional approval goes away?
Correct. Then, then-
It would just expire.
Then there is no change, expires. There's no change of zone.
All right. All right. Other questions or clarifications needed on that?
Don't think so.
All right. And once again, I'll stand for a motion when ready.
Commissioner Ward.
Commissioner Ward, go ahead.
I want to attempt this with a conditional, with a conditional approval.
Give it a, give it a go.
Um, I move to approve change of zone application 2025 dash 022. And how, and how do we want the wording to sound for conditional approval? That's what I'm wondering.
Um, this is Mike from legal council. You could, you could simply say, um, conditional approval. Um, let me, let me pull up the exact code section here.
You want to move for a conditional approval of change of zone application 2025 dash 022? For a period of what? Up to one year for?
The, the one year is implied. So it'd be a conditional approval under, um, section 27 dash 210.
27 dash 210.
Yep.
Okay. And then the conditions, the conditional approval, uh, those conditions can be hashed out between now and the meeting with the commissioner.
They can, they can be hashed out anytime before the Board of Commissioners actually votes to approve.
Okay.
Got it. Which would be October 30th, 30th, correct?
Uh, yes, yes. October 30th is the, if this were to be recommended and go forward, October 30th is the date that the Board of Commissioners would hear.
All right. So your motion is for conditional approval, change of zone 2025 dash 022, commensurate with, uh, ordinance 27 dash 210.
All right.
I think that works.
All right. Is there a second? Commissioner, uh, Jones?
Second.
All right. Motion has been made for con- conditional approval of change of zone application 2025 dash 022 in accordance with ordinance 27 dash 210, correct?
Correct.
All right. Thank you. Uh, it's moved and seconded for approval. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Straws?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Armstrong?
Aye.
Beth?
No.
Ernst?
No.
Jones?
Aye.
Easterwood?
Aye.
Muller?
No.
Miller?
Aye.
I have six to-
Six in favor, three against.
Mm-hmm.
All right. Motion passes.
Okay.
So this will be heard before the Board of Commissioners on October 30th at 7:00 PM.
All right. Our next case is COZ 2025 dash 024, Richard Hawkins. It is a change of zone from unzoned to MP3 Planned Heavy Industrial District with plat 2025 dash 030 preliminary and file plat to create one industrial lot. And PR 2025 dash 031 final development plan to build a open storage lay down yard at 14 South 59th Lane. Does anyone on the commission have any context to disclose on this application?
No.
Is anyone here to present on this application?
Mr. Hawkins? Richard Hawkins? All right. I've got Tom Ingram with CFS Engineers. Folks, if you hear this case being called and you're, uh, the responsible party, if you could get your hand in the air if you're online or make your way up to the podium, it'll make it a whole lot easier than doing a Bueller, Bueller, Bueller type of, uh, uh, situation up here. So you'll help us all out by moving this forward a lot faster. Mr. Ingram? Mr. Ingram?
Okay, can you hear me?
I can.
Okay. Uh, yeah, I'm Tom Ingram, uh, with CFS Engineers. We're at 1421 East 104th Street, Kansas City, Missouri. Um, the project, the 14, um, um, South 59th Street is a, it's a two, um, oh, about a two acre side. It's undeveloped. It's right there on the cusp next to, oh, the American Truck Sales, uh, just right off of, um, oh, the Turner Diagonal and up from Kansas, uh, Kansas Avenue, I think. Um, truck, uh, traffic's very minimal. It's a lay down site, so you're gonna have an open, a gate. It's gonna be a gated community. You're gonna have an access road come in. Um, probably gonna have semis come in and just store, who knows, construction equipment, um, signs, uh, that kind of thing. We, there is a, uh, facility just right to the northeast, the 5770 lay down area, which is virtually, it's identical to this, except much larger. Um, and really that's about about all I can tell you. If you have questions, please, please ask, but I'm looking for points for brevity, so.
All right. Thank you. Any questions for the applicant on this case? Commissioner Ernst?
I am gonna ask where your sign was. I didn't go through the ditch, but I didn't see a ditch. I also didn't see the sign that you were given. Was it on the lot?
I should have been, but I didn't, I wasn't, I didn't put it up and I never saw it. Um, it could have been on the fence right next door. I'm, I, I, I don't have an answer. I'm sorry. I, I really don't know.
I appreciate your honesty.
All right. Thank you. Other questions for the applicant? All right. Seeing none, we'll go to the audience. Anyone in the audience want to speak to this case in favor or in opposition? Please come forward or raise your hand if you're online. Seeing none, we'll go to staff, get their comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Byron to a planning department. A sign was picked up from our office only because I wrote on the sign, so I know- I wrote on the sign, so I know that, I did do that. With that, this is former KDOT right of way, or turn, KDOT Turner Diagonal right of way, that has had no zoning to it, so that's why we're seeing unzoned. Um, it's to be a laydown yard. There are some floodplain things they need to take care of as part of going through this process when they get their building permit, should they be approved. And with that, staff recommends approval, subject to conditions outlined in the staff report.
All right, thank you. Questions for staff? We will need three motions, beginning with a change of zone.
Commissioner Ward.
Commissioner Ward, go ahead.
Make a motion to approve change of zone 2025-024, subject to staff stipulations and comments.
Thank you, motion to approve change of zone application 2025-024 made by Commissioner Ward, is it a second? Commissioner Armstrong?
Yes, it is.
Thank you, any discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Straws.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Armstrong.
Aye.
Beth.
Aye.
Ernst.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Easterwood.
Aye.
Muller.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries nine to zero.
Thank you, this change of zone application will be heard once again on October 30th at 7:00 P.M. before the Board of Commissioners.
You want the plat or the?
Yes, plat would be next.
Commissioner Ward, I make a motion to approve plat 2025-030, subject to staff stipulations and comments.
Thank you, motion to approve plat 2025-030 made by Commissioner Ward and seconded by Commissioner Armstrong, correct?
Yes.
Thank you, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Straws.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Armstrong.
Aye.
Beth.
Aye.
Ernst.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Easterwood.
Aye.
Muller.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries nine to zero.
All right, thank you, and Byron, the plat will not go, correct?
Yeah, that was the plat.
That is correct.
All right, thank you, and now I'll need one for the plan review.
Commissioner Ward, I make a motion to approve plan review application 2025-031, subject to staff stipulations and comments.
All right, motion to approve, approve the plan review made by Commissioner Ward, once again, seconded by Commissioner Armstrong, is that correct?
Yes.
Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Straws.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Armstrong.
Aye.
Beth.
Aye.
Ernst.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Easterwood.
Aye.
Muller.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries nine to zero.
All right, thank you, with this being a final plan review, does not go forward, correct?
Yep, that's correct.
That is correct.
Thank you.
Okay, our next application is SP 2025-041, Bavesh Patel is a special use permit, temporary use of land for commercial purposes for a storage container at 1805 North 110th Street. Does anyone have any context to disclose on this application?
No. Mr. Patel, I've got you queued up, ready to speak, if you would, start off with your name and address and tell us what you, what you're wanting to do with these storage containers.
Uh, thank you, yeah, my name is Bavesh Patel, this is for eight, 1805 North 110th Street, uh, this is a hotel and we are doing a, changing of furniture and carpet and we are asking to store a temporary, uh, containers until we finish changing carpets and furniture, so we are pretty much storing carpet and furniture in, in there and we are, uh, remove as soon as we can. Once the project is done and we are hoping that it should be done by January or February, end of February, probably.
All right, and how long have you had the, the containers out on the property?
Uh, it's been, I think we, we started with two and now we keep adding, so we have, like you can see in the picture, we have five, uh, we had it since three months.
I think we all agree, maybe it's been a little longer than that.
Uh, we had the two.
Want to try again?
Uh, probably three, I mean, I'm, I'm not sure how long my manager in the property take care, but I think three or four months. Uh, the delay is happening because the, some of the furniture did not came because they come from the oversea and we have a tariff, uh, problem, so that's why he's delaying some of the process, but even we want to finish this as soon as we can. So I was, I originally asked for a one year, I think, but I think our plan is to finish by February. It's most of the content is like more than half empty.
You said some of them are more than half, is there any way to consolidate some of them and get rid of some? I think we're all, I think, to be honest with you, there's a lot of us that live out there and attend Monarchs Games and drive by your property every day are getting a little tired of seeing it because we, I think collectively, we believe they've been out there six to seven months.
Uh, we will, so once we have like, right now, like making it to us, uh, consolidating, it will be a problem because the, every container has a different stuff in there, it just moving pieces will be hard, so by, I would say by, uh, Nov- end of November, we're going to start consolidating the container, so you will see like one container going at a, at a time.
All right, and I don't mean to be difficult with you, but I mean, it's been hard, you know, while you say it's hard to consolidate the material, it's also been hard to look at your shipping containers for as long as we've had to look at them.
That is correct.
And I, you've got, in some of the photographs we see in our file, you've got windows that appear to either be boarded up or have some sort of material covering the windows. I, I got to tell you, the photographs that we see in the, uh, that we see in our packet aren't a good look for your hotel.
Yes, and so we acquired this property not.
Is the hotel closed?
No, it, it is not closed, and so.
And people, people want to rent rooms there.
That is correct.
Okay, all right, well, keep going.
So we are, you know, we are doing the remodeling and we are trying to finish as soon as we can, we are trying to look this property nice, we have another property in the area, Wyandotte County Comfort Suite, we keep it top notch. The, the, our purpose is to have this property nice from outside and inside as soon as possible and we are moving fast as we can and we're going to try, you know, we try to keep it minimum, uh, where you don't look bad or anything, and that, that's why we asked the shipping company to give us like same color container, if the possible, I know we got the two different color container and we, we try all that stuff to, not to look difficult, but yeah, we'll, we'll try to consolidate as soon as we can and start removing the container.
All right, and what, so what's the estimate of timeframe for completion? How, how long are you asking to have these four? And I'm sorry, I don't have it called up in my packet in front of me, how much time do you need?
Yeah, I, yes, I, I'm asking until Mar- end of the March, even if I can, because I'm, I don't know the delay of the, some stuff is still not here, some of the furniture that's supposed to come from oversea is delaying, so by March 31st, we should be out, everything should be out. We, this hotel, we are trying to make it ready before FIFA is happening.
All right.
And that's why we have.
You have approval for the end of March of 2026?
That is correct.
All right, thank you, I'm. Any other questions for the applicant? Commissioner Beth?
Yeah, you say you're open for business?
That is correct.
Okay, I, well, I was out there today and I counted seven shipping containers, a dumpster, a old RV, about six semi trucks and a van with a flat tire parked against the building and the dumpster area, the doors had rotted off of it and weeds in the median that have, are about three foot tall. It, it doesn't look like it's open for business and it's really irritating when I drive past there every day also. Uh, before I, I would even consider to vote to allow you to have them there, uh, you know, I would like a confirmation that you're going to do something to, to make it more presentable. I know you want to get it done, but do we have to look at this till March?
Uh, you will see until March, but not all the container, we're going to start consolidating the container, like landscaping, you can see that we already work on the landscaping, you know, to look nice outside, right? So we are, we are trying, the dumpster over there, we have the company will ask them to put a, you know, nice, uh, you know, container, not damaged or anything, we'll, we'll try to keep it up, you know, clean because even we want to look that property nice and clean because it's open for business. We acquired this last year, we are moving, you know, we are doing a, like even the dumpster door, it's already been placed and ordered to replace that door. So once the construction is about to end, you will able to see from outside the property, like even we are, we're going to paint the building from outside and everything, so we are moving all those pieces, so it's going to look nice from outside and clean, uh, you will see it soon.
All right, other questions of the applicant? So if we were to impose some restrictions on getting the exterior of the building cleaned up, taking care of your weeds, getting rid of the old mobile home or, uh, RV, uh, getting rid of the disabled car parked out front within 30 days or else we're going to send codes enforcement out, that, you'd be acceptable to getting that property looking better?
That is correct, and sometime people park on the back that we don't know they are not the customer, sometime we have to go and find like who's parking, sometime we work with the, uh, we have a Legend Security, we are part of the Legend, so we use the security too, so we, sometime we call and we trying to, because people come and park this, you know, vehicle on the back that is not even belongs to our hotels. So we are in the, you know, we are working with the police department, Legend Security, trying to find out who's the trailer and the containers and to increase the security, we actually add 40 cameras throughout the hotel, even outside, we have like almost 10 cameras too, uh, to, you know, you know, try to lower all that stuff, so the, the trailer outside, sometime if you see it, that's not even belongs to a hotel. Uh, I see the van over there, we'll find, we already talked to the Legend Security and, uh, they, uh, they came out actually last week and we find out that is one of the customer who's staying over there and they have the van, they're supposed to check out, but we'll give them warning, they have to remove this van.
All right, all right, I'm going to take you to your word, you got, you got a commitment to cleaning up the, the property.
Of course.
Any other questions for this applicant? Anybody in the audience want to speak to this case in favor or in opposition? Please come forward or raise your hand. All right, seeing none, we'll close the public portion of the meeting, we'll go to, I'm sorry, Mr. Toy and get his comment.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Um, I'll kind of leave up to you guys, but as pertains to recommendation established, we're not going to do two years, we're not going to do a year, um, I would say three months or six months, I'll leave that to you as far as how long you want to give that dur- duration for, but that will then put an onus on him to A, clean up, two, get the containers removed, dumps removed. I understand there's some interior remodeling so that the, the KC dumpster you see, that can the picture, I understand you got stuff coming out, you got to throw it away, but the containers need to go because A, you're taking out parking, um, that's one thing, um, but it does detract from the side overall. And to your point, Mr. Commissioner Ward, I was there this morning as well, I noticed that there were, looks like overnight, over the road truck parked on the east side of the building, which may or may not have been their parking lot, so I get it, that's a little difficult, but there's cars on the west side, look like there are guests staying there and the ground floor, I saw mattresses leaned up against the window and other things, so it looks like there's a state of ongoing interior remodeling occurring. With that, staff would recommend approval for three or six months, I'll leave that to you as far as how you guys see fit, um, but no more, because after that, we will cite code enforcement come out and have them be removed and start finding, and then there's no renewal after six months or three months, your, you know, your choice.
All right, thank you. Questions for staff?
Not a long time.
Commissioner Beth?
Um, I don't know where to go here even, uh, because part of his problem were people parking, parking there is because of the broken windows theory, because it looks like he's open for a business besides a hotel business and that's attracting probably his problems with people dumping stuff there. Um, I don't know.
Attractive nuisance, attracts a nuisance.
E- e- exactly, it, it looks like a place that you would dump stuff there. And so, so I, I can't proceed leaving that for six months, he's had it a long time, he's had the place for a year and it's, uh, I don't know what the recourse is other than, uh, I guess, uh, I don't, I give up.
Let the record show, Commissioner Beth is at a loss for words. Commissioner, Commissioner Ernst, however, is not, so I'm going to call on him next.
I simply wanted to compliment staff for taking the appropriate steps to modify the plan in motion and I would make a motion to recommend approval of petition SP 2025-041 for 90 days, at which time everything needs to go.
All right, thank you, motion to approve, uh, special use application 2025-041 for a period of 90 days, uh, is made by Commissioner Ernst and seconded by Commissioner, uh, I believe Easterwood, correct?
Oh, no.
No, no, all right, well, let's get a second first. Commissioner Jones, is that a second?
Yes.
All right, there's a second by Commissioner Jones, Commissioner Easterwood, a comment.
Yes, I have a question because the applicant has stated that, uh, that some of the delay was due to tariffs and, uh, shipping, receiving goods that were needed in order to complete the renovation. Is 90 days going to be enough for him to get all the materials he's waiting on?
I think that's going to be, at this point, that's going to be up to the app, the applicant to, to get something done or else he's going to have to clear out his parking lot while he waits for the additional material to come in. Because I think the answer was that it was, at this point, we don't know what it's going to be, but, uh, the plan was to have it all completed by the end of March, he's now, according to the motion being given, 90 days.
Can I at least get, can I at least ask for a five months? Because the material that's coming from oversea is, is best where I have, I don't have a clear answer and it's a 115 room hotel, we are trying to make this property nice, you will see it, I mean, you can look at my other properties, a Comfort Suite, and it can, anybody can drive by, they can, I mean, we can, you know, keep it clean, I'm trying to make this property nice, I need that a little bit time, I'm going to try to, you know, take the container one by one out, but I'm looking for at least five months if I can get it.
But if you're waiting for material, I don't know why you need to have a shipping container out there waiting for it, I mean, if the material arrives, you just, you, you, if you've got furniture and things like that that are arriving, you take it inside. Why would we take it off the truck, put it into a shipping container?
So, because right now we are replacing carpet and the furniture stuff is not here, so what is happening is we are taking the old furniture out, putting inside the container, changing the carpet, putting the old furniture back, once we get the, all the furniture from oversea, then we are taking out the old furniture and putting the new furniture back, so it's a little bit happening because of this tariff, tariff and everything, you know, even the supplier not giving us a price that, so that, we got some of the, most of the stuff, there is little bit stuff we still getting delayed.
Okay, right now, the motion on the floor, and I'm going to go ahead and mute you, you've had your chance to speak, is for 90 days, we'll see if that gets changed based on your latest comment, but right now, the motion on the floor is for 90 days. All right, further comment, Commissioner Straws?
I, I just.
I'll go back, back to you, Commissioner Easterwood.
I would just like to ask the, um, the motioneer, if that's a word in this statement, I'm probably making that up, but in, in the spirit that he did take the property over a year ago and he is going through full renovation, can we give him the five months, but an immediate, uh, immediate cleanup on everything that can be done to the current property that needs to be done to beautification, all vehicles that are rundown, removed within the next, uh, two weeks, all grass, all the upkeep that they can do, uh, be done immediately as a condition for the approval to let him have the five months, that's just a request of the, the, uh.
How about that be an amendment to the motion that's on the floor?
Chair.
Rodney? Oh, sorry.
What's the percentage of this place being renovated? Because there's climate control storage, there's self-storage, it doesn't have to be a container, which would probably be cheaper.
Thank you for that observation.
Now, he has rooms available, he can place things in there.
Yes, sir, thank you. Commissioner Easterwood?
I was going to second, uh, Commissioner Straws' amendment.
All right, well, Commissioner Straws, is that an amendment you're proposing?
I, I would like to propose that, I just, I know it's nice.
I'm going to, I'm going to restate it for you, your, your motion is to amend the current motion to a period of five months and at which time he has, the applicant has 30 days to get the exterior of the property in compliance with regard to landscaping, uh, the removal of inoperable vehicles, uh, abandoned motor homes or anything like that that's on the property that, that gives itself a, a look of nuisance.
Yes.
All right, including repair of any kind of dumpster, uh, enclosures or anything like that, he has a period of 30 days to get that done and exchange for a five month approval period.
That is correct.
All right, is that a second, Ms., uh, sorry, Commissioner Easterwood?
Yes.
All right, any questions on the amendment? Commissioner Ernst?
I will accept that as cooler heads prevailing, if everyone is willing to accept the fact that some of those containers were there apparently before he bought the building.
And I appreciate your comment at this. And I appreciate your comment, at this point, I'm gonna just take it as an amendment to your amendment. And we'll just do it, what I think is the right way, so, the, what is on the floor now is amendment to five months, thirty days to get the area cleaned up. If that passes, we'll go back to the original amendment, which, I mean, sorry, the original motion, which is five months. Alright, all those in favor of the amendment? I'm sorry, Rose, I'm trying to do your job. Roll call on the amendment.
Straws?
Aye.
Ward?
No.
Armstrong?
Aye.
Beth?
No.
Ernst?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Easterwood?
Aye.
Muller?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
I have seven in favor, two against, is that consistent with your count? Alright, so the motion is back on the floor, motion for approval of special use permit twenty twenty-five dash zero four one for a period of five months. Applicant will have thirty days thereafter to get the property cleaned up with regard to all of the other items aforementioned in the amendment. Alright, any discussion? Alright, we're gonna move to a vote on that one, Rose.
Okay, Straws?
Aye.
Ward?
No.
Armstrong?
Aye.
Beth?
No.
Ernst?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Easterwood?
Aye.
Muller?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
The motion carries seven to two.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Patel, you've got thirty days to get the property cleaned up on the outside, and you've got until the, uh, you've got five months to, uh. Get your furniture in and get things cleaned up, thank you. This will be heard once again on October thirtieth at seven PM before the Board of Commissioners.
Our next application is plat twenty twenty-five dash zero two eight, John Witsko. It is a preliminary and final plat to subdivide one lot into three single-family residential lots at forty-eight oh one Metropolitan Avenue. Does anyone on the commission have any contacts to disclose on this application?
No.
John Witsko?
Yes, sir.
Hey, Will Anderson, B H C Inc., seven one two State Avenue, Kansas City, Kansas. We're in front of you today for a, uh, preliminary and final plat. Which is basically a fifteen-acre lot up on Met- Metropolitan and Forty-seventh Street. Down into roughly five-acre lots, three five-acre lots, at this stage, that's the only intention. The idea of pulling them down to roughly five acres is to just make them easier to sell at this stage.
Alright.
Open for any questions.
Thank you, any questions for the applicant? Alright, seeing none, we'll go to the audience, anyone want to speak to this case in favor or in opposition, please come forward or raise your hand if you're online. Seeing no one, we'll go to staff and get their comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Byron Toy Planning Department, staff recommends approval, subject conditions outlined in the staff report.
I'm sorry, wait a minute, I do have someone online, excuse me. Alright, excuse me one second, I'm gonna back up. Ms. Shyby, you have a question on this one?
Yes, I was just gonna ask, does the property, uh, that particular property, uh, but up against Leo Alvey Park? Just out of curiosity if it goes that far north.
Mr. Anderson, what, what park can you say it again?
Leo Alvey Park.
Leo Alvey Park.
I'm not aware of it.
Perhaps staff can answer that question?
Byron Toy Planning Department, no, it's about. Have a quarter mile down the street to the, to the west and to the north.
Alright, quarter mile down the street to the west.
Okay, cause I'm trying to figure out, I know that forty-seven hundred, there's a house there, and then forty-seven ten. There is, uh, what used to be a store and a parking lot, and I was kind of thinking it was the property. Right next to that, which is near the entrance to Leo Alvey, so is it on the other side of Alvey Park?
The outside of the street is where the proposed development, Byron Toy Planning Department, south side of the street is where the proposed development is.
Okay.
On the north side of the street.
Gotcha, gotcha, okay, thank you so much, that was just, I was just trying to get my bearings where it is, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak to this case, uh, Mr. Ernst, I see you have your, Commissioner Ernst, I see you have your hand up?
I was simply going to add that it is, I think it's elevated on the south side. And I wondered if Will knew where Seven Birch's Acres came from. Because that was a lot of Indian land that my wife's family owned in that area.
It's obviously from some tree, right, Birch? And, uh, known by the people in the audience, some of them should get it.
Alright, thank you, and, and staff has given their recommendation?
Yes, but I can state it again if need be.
No, you're good, second, staff recommends approval, correct?
That's correct.
Thank you, any just, uh, questions for staff? Seeing none, I'll stand for a motion. Commissioner Straws?
I move to approve plat twenty twenty-five dash zero two eight, according to staff stipulations and comments.
Thank you, motion to approve plat twenty twenty-five dash zero two eight made by Commissioner Straws and seconded by Commissioner. Ernst, is that correct?
Sure.
Thank you, any discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Straws?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Armstrong?
Aye.
Beth?
Aye.
Ernst?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Easterwood?
Aye.
Muller?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
The motion carries nine to zero.
Thank you. Thanks for your patience.
Our last application of the night is PR twenty twenty-five dash zero two eight, Michael Rhodes is a preliminary development plan for a grocery store with three fuel dispensers. At ten seven oh two Donahue Road, does anyone have any contacts to disclose on this application?
Uh, yes, I just have, I've had several calls from opponents of the application.
Okay.
Alright.
You here to present?
I'm sorry?
Pardon me?
Are you here to present?
I am.
Yes, yes, Mr. Rhodes, go ahead, please, give us your name and address.
Mike Rhodes, one oh eight zero zero Donahue Road. I'm the owner of the, uh, subject property. Uh, I was in front of you about two months ago for a change of zoning. I don't see the plans up there, but they haven't changed, other than I came into compliance with the existing zoning. By reducing the dispensers from eight dispensers, fuel dispensers to three. So, that said. Uh, before I discuss the merits of the property, I want to, uh. Talk about some critical misunderstandings, this property has been commercially zoned CP one since two thousand two. Long before I purchased it in two thousand fifteen. I didn't change the zoning. I'm not fulfilling, and, and I'm just fulfilling the long intended purpose. Uh, the project represents millions in private investment, thirty to forty local jobs. Contractual commitment of five cents per gallon to Piper Schools, potentially two hundred and fifty thousand dollars over the next ten years. Uh, I will have no wine, no spirits, no paraphernalia, just fresh, healthy food. Now, I'd like to address my neighbors' concerns directly. As far as crime, which was brought up many times at two different neighborhood meetings. I literally live next door, my house is two hundred and fifty feet from this store. And the only thing in the way is some fescue grass, okay, they live. Three hundred and fifty feet away, up a forty-foot hill with woods. Hundred and seventy-five feet of woods between them, they're three hundred and fifty feet away. Up a hill, okay, why would I invest millions to bring crime next to my children's bedrooms? Why would I do that? Your homes are, like I said, three hundred and fifty feet away, up a, a densely wooded hill. My home's right on the same property, every security measure protects my family first. As far as traffic, we're investing in turn lanes that benefit everyone. Our professional traffic study shows conditions improve from level D to level C, and seventy-five percent of the traffic is already. Passing on Donahue, seventy-five percent, so. Capture, you know, the, the, that represents pass-by capture rather than new trips, nobody's gonna be going down four thirty-five. And go, hey, there's Mike's store, let's pull off, this just isn't gonna happen. This is a neighborhood store, it's for our community. And then, as far as the light and the noise. That forty-foot elevation difference is a four-story building between us. My store will close at ten PM, deliveries will be restricted during morning and evening rush. We're using full cutoff LED lighting. We're not only preserving the tree buffer, but also adding to it. So, I, I saw a letter from, from Dr. Harrison, says she wanted to continue to be able to use her deck, well, she should be able to do that. Uh, and then I, I had, had one concern about, uh, I don't know, representative building that. Went, a grocery store that went out of business downtown. And I, so, it's concerned that I would go broke, and, and there would be an empty building there. Well, I'm not a chain, I can't walk away, my family lives here, but more importantly. This is Piper, we support our own, people in Piper actually do support their own. Uh, you know, Piper, when neighborhood, when a neighbor invests in serving neighbors, Piper shows up. You've proven that with every local business and every school fundraiser. So, I'm betting millions that Piper communities, on the Piper community spirit, that they'll show up. Property values. I think there's some relatives in the room. Quality neighborhoods with, uh. Uh, quality neighborhood retail increases values by eight to twelve percent. As your, as your neighbor. My success depends on being a good steward, so, I'm not gonna build. You know, something that's gonna be dilapidated in five, ten years next to, next to my own home. I just, I just wouldn't do that. As far as the wildlife that was brought up, uh, responsible development builds where infrastructure exists. Preserving larger natural areas for better environmental health. As for fuel storage and dispensing, modern EPA complaint, compliance systems. Are a hundred times safer than stations from twenty years ago. To my neighbors, I'm accountable to you, my door's open, we're in this together. The facts support approval, the staff recommends approval. They've spent months reviewing every detail and found that we exceed requirements, the community needs these services. I've addressed every concern with concrete solutions. Commissioners, this is a responsible development you want for commercially zoned property, locally owned, community-focused, and accountable. I respectfully ask for your approval on this matter, and I welcome any questions.
Alright, thank you. Any questions from the commission first? Okay, I, I guess I'll start off, Mr. Rhodes, first of all, I want to thank you for bringing the proposal forward. The one that you're bringing forward with us tonight, I mean, there's been multiple proposals from you in the past, um, and.
One.
Okay, one, I know, it's one, but you've been back several times, I'm sorry, maybe I should just clarify that. Each one has generated considerable public interest and concern, um, but I just want you to address. The following on how this proposal, the, the current proposal, does it differ from any previous iterations that you brought forward? Uh, and how does it, how does it respond to the concerns that the?
I just responded to the concerns of the neighbors, okay? I, you heard that, didn't you?
Okay.
Okay, so you heard that, the difference is that this is in compliance with the zoning that exists.
I, I'm not being adversarial, I'm just, I, I'm, before I open it up to the neighbors' concerns, I just want, I just want to give you the, one more opportunity. Now, the, so now we'll, we'll go a little further, so, you talked about traffic congestion, you talked about, um, noise impacts, lighting, uh. What about general compatibility of this type of commercial development within the neighborhood and the rural community?
I'm not in a neighborhood, this building is not in a neighborhood.
Alright, how about it, residential and rural setting, let me, let me change my wording.
This, this is not in, it's, it's four hundred feet from the houses, there's a tract E of their subdivision is a common area. That is heavily wooded between this development and their homes. So, I, I'm not in a neighborhood.
Okay, alright.
But, but if you look at all of the stores, whether it's Price Chopper, uh, Walmart, all of them are right next to neighborhoods, they're, they're neighborhood stores. That's what, they're not gonna build if there's no rooftops, you have to have rooftops. So, I mean, these stores are built. In conjunction with neighborhoods.
Okay, I'm just, I, again, no problem, so you've, you've reduced the, the number of pumps to three.
Correct.
Does the, is this a new, and without going back and look at my previous packet, is this a new version of what you were submitting before? You, before you submitted for eight, correct?
That's the, that's the change.
Right, where was the other five pumps located on that map?
To the east, well, let, let's, let's put it this way, there was, uh. There was three to the east, is that right? So, it's three, and then one on the south end. Well, must have been four to the east and one on the south, yeah, that's what it was.
And what's that replaced with now, is that an expanded island of pumps, or is there just additional parking?
Yeah, just additional parking.
Alright, so is there, is there at any point, any, uh, additional space for expansion for either the store or the pumps?
Absolutely.
Okay, alright, that's all I have, uh, any other questions from the commission before we go to the public? Alright, anyone in the audience want to speak to this case in favor or in opposition, please raise your hand if you're online, come forward if you're in attendance, alright? Okay, well, one by one, name and, name and address, please, well, first of all, anyone in support, let's do that first, anyone in support? Alright, alright, now, anyone online in support? Alright, we'll go with opposition and we'll start with whoever wants to be first.
Hello, my name is Dave Smythe at forty thirteen North one hundred seventh terrace. Alright, and if I had known you guys had so much fun at these, I would have been here earlier.
I know, we are absolutely a hit, people come from all over to see this, so, I appreciate that.
I bet, thank you, alright, so, basically, we, we've lived in the neighborhood for two years, uh.
Which neighborhood is that?
Uh, this is the Piper, Piper Estates, Heritage of Piper.
Heritage of Piper Estates.
So, we are directly north of where the, of the proposed development.
Do we have our PowerPoint to?
Oh, yes.
Please. I think we're, the way it's been going, I think we're gonna be okay, but thank you for saying that.
Okay, so, uh, we have been looking into this since we first heard of it, uh, a few weeks ago, so we're a little late to the game. Uh, first, we have unanswered questions, and we have some concerns that we feel like haven't been addressed and haven't been able to get answers to. First one is about traffic study, we've been trying to get hold of the traffic study, but we haven't been able to, to get anything released, other than the confirmation that there was one, one done, next slide.
Thank you.
Uh, the biggest, the first, the first one that came, comes up is the, is, right now, Donahue is closed to, to truck traffic. And so, we don't know how this would affect it, we understand that there would have to be delivery trucks coming in, which are gonna be. Uh, sixty to eighty thousand pound semi-trailers that are gonna, gonna come through there, but does that open it up to other trucks that are gonna come through and use Donahue Road as a, as a cut-through over to Highway seven?
Alright, we'll get you some answers, any questions that you have, I'm gonna write these down and we'll get you, we'll get some answers.
Really appreciate that, okay, uh, next, next slide, please. Alright, we also, we also have real concerns about the, the fuel delivery route, as you can see, I've basically taken the, the, uh, information that Mr. Rhodes has thankfully provided to us. And overlaid it on the plot map, so we could see where everything is. Uh, it looks like fuel trucks will have to come in through the Donahue exit and then go through the driveway. On the rear, are the, on the north side of the development, in order to get to the fuel, am I assuming that correctly?
No.
No?
So, how is it coming in?
You wanna clarify?
Okay, well, you gotta go to me, so we'll get you those answers.
Okay, great, we're gonna clarify.
We'll, we'll get Mr. Rhodes up to.
Alright, my concern is that those.
That's alright, you're new to this.
Is, is some truck trailers coming up and, and being parked on that driveway, while they're refueling, idling while they're refueling. And the noise from that ranges from ninety-five to a hundred and ten decibels. The lots there are definitely closer than four hundred feet, for, that's about four hundred feet from the road, from the road, as opposed to from the development. There's a lot of those, a lot of those lots, they're only about a hundred and fifty to two hundred feet away from, uh, the upper, the property line right there, okay? The wind is out at the south from nine, in nine months of the year. The wind is out at the south from nine, in nine months of the year in this area, which means tractor trailer exhaust and noise is all going to get blown directly up into all of those residences that are immediately north of the, of the property. Okay? Next slide, please. Okay, we do, we still have concerns about the traffic because we're adding another two, two left turns onto Donahue Road in the middle of a very busy area and during peak hours. There's going to turn, left turns in, left turns out, and then there's going to be traffic turning onto, onto Hutton going south, which is going to add to the congestion there. Our, we also have another concern here that is a resulting of that. Backed up traffic may well take, take our streets as a shortcut to get up to the schools, which is going to add to our traffic load. Next slide, please. Okay, we got concerned about pollution and trash because of stores and gas stations. There is always trash on the roadside, but the biggest concern is airborne contaminants and pollutants, biggest ones being benzene, ozone, and truck exhaust and gas vapor. EPA says there is no safe exposure level to benzene. There are studies that show, that we, we have, we found that say there's, the elevator probability is very close to where the, where the filling is taking place, that the tank filling is taking place, where the cars are being filled and, and where spills are going to be made. But wind and elevation have a determinant on that. And with the winds coming out of south, a lot of that risk area is going to be distorted up into the north side, upright into those residential areas as well. Okay, next slide, please. Okay, it's going to increase our costs because we've already been told by insurance companies that they're going to have to raise our rates because of the proximity of the gas station and, and the direction where we are from that. The other thing we're going to do, the other thing we found out is when we go to sell our house, we will have to pay for some additional air quality tests and contamination tests that right now run from 400 to $1,000 to complete for the simple version of that. And if it's going, can go up to $10,000 for the higher, for the more expensive if they have to get into more intensive stuff, okay? Next, next slide. Okay, on the site plan, Mr. Rhodes very, very graciously provides some additional information that we requested. We, he showed us, we gave us a plot that showed where the location of the tankments were so we could figure, do some figuring and understand our risk. We did, still don't know the capacity and the location. We don't know what grades of fuel and whether diesel is going to be sold there. And those also have an effect on the, on the total risk. But the August 28 drawing that he sent us also includes those extra pumps on there that you were talking about as future canopy and, and five additional pumps, double sided, okay? And so that also has a great deal of effect on our costs and our, and our risks as well because it's more venting, more, more gas. If all of those go in and he gets up to the level that he wanted, he was originally talking about, there will be at least 200 delivery semi-trailer trucks going into that place every year in order to keep them supplied, okay? That's a lot of traffic. All right, next slide. We have concerns about the noise. I know that there, there has been some talk about the natural, the 45-foot natural grade that would protect us from some of the things, but those grades don't start till they get into our yards, okay? There's nothing on the, on the landscaping and plot map that we can see that shows any, any elevation that is going to limit it. The, the only thing we can find about the tree removal and where it's going to be is some comments that they couldn't go past the property line. Well, the property line would mean that some of the houses that are directly north of that are going to have either zero or less than 50 feet of tree buffer. And according to the studies that we have found, it takes at least 100 feet of tree buffer, dense tree cover, undisturbed in order to, to reduce noise by five to 10 decibels. This is from trucks that are going to be producing 95 to 115, which is almost as loud as Chief does Arrowhead Stadium. Not quite, but it's in the neighborhood.
One more minute.
Okay, thank you. Next slide. Pardon?
Go ahead.
Okay, so the, and with respect to the crime issue, you did provide some information from the convenience store trade group that said, yes, we know that, that convenience stores are the favorite robbery, one of the favorite robbery targets of criminals. But most of, but it doesn't, the chances of it extending into the neighborhoods are very low. When I went out and looked at the actual crime reports for the gas stations in the, in the immediate five-mile area, I looked at the last year within a half-mile radius of that. And you'll notice, and this is the crime statistics that I, that it reported for each one of those gas stations. And the green one is our neighborhood right now where we are. Nobody wants to be on the left side of that graph, and I'm sure you don't either, okay?
Go ahead.
Okay, but I would also tell you is that the vast majority of those reports did not come on the station premises. They were in the surrounding area, okay? Next slide, please.
We'll go fast.
We'll go fast. We'll skip that one real quick. Okay, all right, biggest, and the biggest impact is, is property value impact. Mr. Rhodes has claimed that we can expect an eight to 12% property value increase, but that's not what the data says. What it's, what it says is that we're going to get fewer buyers for, for houses that are adjacent to a gas station. Appraisals will be lower. The ability of people to get loans for them will be in jeopardy because VHA and FHA do not have restrictions on that and they, and they require extra testing and appraisals in order to allow us to sell those houses. And we will have to pay for that. Next slide, please. All right, one last one. Keep going to the next one. All right, because this is, this is the bottom line. This is where the numbers are, okay? What the studies show is that we're going to see if, with the three-pump gas station, we're going to see zero to 12% decreases in property value from the gas station. And when you combine that for the 13 houses that are directly adjacent to the lot, that comes up to 111,000 on the low side if everything is done right and all the remediations take place and they are successful. And on the high side, it's 286,000 that we cumulatively will lose as a result of this, okay? If, and next slide, last one. If we go to the, to the full set of pumps that he has, has in, in the plan that he shared, it, it almost doubles in total amount. We're going to go to 228,000 we're going to lose and 452,000 on the high side if things are not done and buffer is not appropriate and, and they find, and we find contamination.
I do have one question for you. The, where did you, where did you find those reports?
I have a whole lot of, I have, I have a three-page list of the sources that I've used. I'd be happy to share.
Okay, if you wouldn't mind giving that to staff.
Be happy to.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Name an address, please.
I'm Anthony Lasley. I live at 4040 North 108th Street. We moved over there about eight years ago. And reason why we moved over there was because of the quietness, the beautiful wood atmosphere we have over there, the seclusion. We didn't want to be over there in no gas station, in no grocery store, anything like that. It's only two blocks away. If you want to go to a gas station, we go to Casey's, which is two minutes away. I remember years ago when he tried to put this deal together when he was at Piper High School, when we had another meeting about this. And he wasn't going to live next door to that gas station. He was planning on selling his house with the gas station and cashing out. He wasn't going to be living next door to no gas station, no grocery store. He was cashing out and moving out and leaving us hanging, holding the bag of all the congestion, the noise, the crime. Plus no sidewalks for the kids coming out, hanging out at that, at that particular location. It's just definitely too close to our residence to be having a convenience store or gas station. And Rod Duane, it's about as close as I used to live next to you. That's how close his house is to mine. So, and you know how, where we fought that Avery situation years ago. You've been there with me on that. People move, don't pin that kind of money, $500, $600,000 house to have a gas station literally 50 feet from them. You know, that's not what we paying for when we pay to live in Piper Estates and, and live in those type of areas and pay those kind of taxes for our property values to go down and we still getting hammered on taxes and things like that. So this may be a cash cow for him, but all of us, it's no good for us. And we didn't move out there for that. So just wanted to state my, my say on that.
All right, thank you, sir. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Erica Wall. I live at 10705 Wagon Trail Court in the Heritage Piper Estates. And I am your friendly neighborhood Realtor. I just had a few things to say. It's probably going to cover a lot of the things you're going to hear, but you got to hear how the neighbors feel. Some things that I came up with from some sources. The sources, just so you had an idea since you had asked. Sorry, it's coming up. New York City Data Science Academy, the Yale Department of Economics, and the National Land Realty. Those are a few sources that I got some of this stuff from. A few things, community impacts for the opposition for this, health concerns. A major, major factor is driving the public opposition is the risk of harmful pollutants. Gas stations release volatile organic compounds into the air. Studies have found higher rates of childhood leukemia near gas stations. Property values, this studies consistently show that residential property values decrease the closer they are to gas stations. The decrease is mostly significant for homes within 100 meters with smaller but still notable effects extending several hundred meters away. Traffic and noise. Gas stations, especially large ones, which this would not be, with convenience stores generate increased vehicle and pedestrian traffic, often late into the evening. I know this would close at 10:00 P. M., but it's still later than a lot of us. This creates additional noise, light pollution, and congestion that negatively impacts the character of the neighborhood. And again, you'll hear a lot of us purchased in this area because how I've described it is it's nice, it's country living by the city and five minutes from everything I need. So it's nice, quiet, and we don't want that extra noise. Building a small grocery store in a suburban area generally does have a positive impact on home prices, while adding a gas station tends to have the negative impact or a negative effect, particularly on the closest homes. Overall impact of combining the two depends heavily on the relative benefits of the grocery store versus the drawbacks of the gas station. Again, mentioned the decreased property values, then vulnerable mental safety. The neighborhood stigma. Some people will view a gas station as an undesirable facility. This perception can diminish the overall appeal of a neighborhood, especially when the gas station is combined with a convenience store, which could attract loitering. I understand it's not a convenience store, however, then we can kind of go into the photo. Not an architect, but in the past I have drawn things, and you write not to scale. This looks very not to scale to me. I drive by this several times a day and I cannot vision how that would actually work physically. I don't know if anybody, many of the commissioners are familiar with that corner that we have. That space is not suited for what he has proposed. The questions that I have. The lot size, you state that the grocery store will have a bakery, a butcher, fresh produce, et cetera. That plus three gas pumps, plus parking. The space seems much too ambitious. I see this lot every day multiple times as I drive by to go to the Legends Shopping Center where I easily get food and do my shopping, and I don't use fuel, so I don't need to worry about the gas. I'm seeing this drawing now, but I imagine you have two entrances that are both corner. And this is the first time I saw the drawing, I apologize. Knowing that lot size, that's really going to impact the traffic, especially the south side on Donahue will impact traffic that comes from the Hutton area going to our neighborhood. They mentioned the trucks that are for delivery. That is a no-truck position of the roads, so that's a thought to think of. Another issue that arises, the space is nice and vacant. It's simply residential. Across the street to the east is for sale. And having this business could potentially entice that land to the east and to the south to be purchased and further developed, which is off-putting in why we all chose to live in this area in the first place. While I completely appreciate Mr. Rhodes' entrepreneurial spirit, I think this particular area is just not the answer for your ambition. I also understand that he purchased this land for his home probably with the intent to create this business. And I understand the frustration that he has by hearing our opposition. But if, speaking of the spirit of Piper, please hear us and respect our opposition to this business plan for our home, I feel like it simply benefits you. It does not benefit the community at large. And to the commissioners, I respectfully request that you take our, our opinions into consideration for this matter.
All right, thank you very much. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
Angela Cunningham. Do you need my address?
Yes, please.
We're 003 North 107th Terrace. Thank you. This is my second time here on this gas station at this corner. The third, I believe, overall for our community. I just want to say our community has spoken loudly and clearly over the past five or so years this proposal's come up that we don't want it, nor do we need it. Fueling stations don't belong in a residential neighborhood. There's no community need for it. It's just private profit. Our homes will bear the cost in traffic, safety, sleep, and property values while the public gets nothing it doesn't already have. Personally, we bought our home less than a year ago. If I had have known that this was coming in, I wouldn't have bought it. My husband and I have lived across the country for a lot of years in military service, and we are finally nearing the end. And we're very excited to move to Piper area to raise our daughter. In this area specifically, this neighborhood specifically doing its low crime rate, it's peace and quiet that we can finally have. You've heard the facts. I cannot raise my daughter this less than 300 feet from a gas station. And now I've got to sell my home, if that's the case. And you've seen the problems I'm going to have trying to sell it. You all have the power to say no. You've voted it down twice now, and I'm asking you to vote it down again. Please, and thank you.
Thank you, and thank you and your families for your service. Yes, sir.
Good evening. My name is Paul Aller. I live at 4004 North 108th Terrace. So our property doesn't join Mr. Rhodes' property. But we're on the, just on the other side of the road and we, our, our property backs up to a pond. I have several concerns. First of which is that Mr. Rhodes in his prior statement before this group had indicated that he needed eight pumps. It was not a viable business option to only have three pumps. We know that he has future expansion ideas. The idea is once we get three pumps in, we're going to get the, we're going to get the other five pumps. He's building the infrastructure to do that. I understand that. I appreciate that. But this ultimately becomes a convenience store. It's not going to be the place that people go to buy their groceries on a daily basis. He has to compete with Walmart. He's got to compete with Target. He's got to compete with Hen House. He's got to compete with Keevers, all which are in a reasonably located distance. If we're getting into our cars to drive around the block, we're going to get in our cars to drive wherever we find the best value for what we are getting. I appreciate an idea that says that, oh, we're going to have just wholesome goods. We're going to, we're going to have fresh meat straight off the butchers, but it's not a sustainable model. If that was the sustainable model, QuickTrip would have done that a long time ago. This is going to be a convenience store. And he can dress it up however he wants, but that's what it is. We have, we have serious issues with concerning the roads. And I don't know who's going to be responsible to make two-lane roads into four-lane roads with a turning lane. But in order to handle the semi-trucks full of fuel, he's going to need a bigger road than what we've got there. We've got, yeah, they're probably 10-foot or 12-foot lanes. So we've got a 24-foot road. I know that it's concerning enough that for a great deal of time after there was some work done on the roadway, the edge of the road just dropped off. And I was always afraid that I would catch that tire and once I was off, it was basically a ditch. It is easy, it, it's hard for me to understand how he's going to get a semi unless the semi is going to use all of the other lane of traffic that's coming from the west in order to turn right into his station. And then, of course, you got the whole issue that this is a road that is not designated for truck traffic. So then you have to come down Hutton. And again, they're going to be taking all of the roadway from either the north or the south in both directions in order to get, and to get those semi trucks in there. This intersection has already been handled by the, the traffic people because it used to be a four-way stop and it was a real problem. Having the light there helped. Making the, the turn lanes to be able to turn left from each direction helped. But it doesn't help in figuring out how you're going to deal with the congestion and all of the traffic that's coming from the west to take their kids up to the junior high and the grade school. That's what, half a mile to the north? Nor is it going to, how, how they're even going to physically get it in there. We are concerned about the crime. It's a legitimate. It's a legitimate issue. We don't have to go far or, or turn on our news to understand that that's a um, that has been a problem within the Kansas City metropolitan area. It does breed, um, it does breed a, a group of people, a gathering area. Um, what is that going to do with the junior high kids that are a half a mile north? Uh, is this going to become a hangout where things happen that we don't want to be happening? Those are issues. We also have a whole runoff issue because that forty-five degree slope that they say is um it has runoff that comes down right through his, his proposed building. Uh, we, we have real concerns because the way this is platted out, there's not forty-five feet of trees. He will be within, he, he'll, he'll have to take out all of the trees that are there in order to build what he wants to build. And so he's going to destroy the, the natural habitat that's there. He's going to destroy the ability to dampen any effects that he has. It's just not a feasible plan and we ask you that you deny it.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? And folks online, I know that you're there and as soon as we get done with the commission chambers, we'll go to you all. Yes, sir.
Uh, my name is Phil Weiser, I live at four zero one two North one hundred and eighth street. Uh, I would be one of the houses that gets close to the, the, the back end of this, of this particular project. Uh, my main concern, concern about this is that we haven't, there are no other gas stations in western Wyandotte County anyway, that are not on four lane highways. You know, we would be building this, this thing would get built on two railroads. You know, the Casey's, the, everything on Leavenworth, everything on parallel, you know, you're, you're, you're on a four lane, you're four lane highway. It's designed for major road access. You know, Donahue, at least at this particular point in time, is not really for that type of space. Uh, I've just felt like there's, we've got gas stations, three gas stations on parallel, four if you count the, the Walmart. You've got a gas station over at Leavenworth. It's not really needed, the grocery stores, you've got an Albertson's. Well, you know, you, if you live in the area, a lot of you, it sounds like you live in the area there. You've got the Albertson's, you've got the uh Target, you've got the Walmart, uh, you've got the Sam's Club, uh, and uh, you know, the various. And to me, it just feels like uh something, something besides a gas station or, or grocery store would fit better for that area. If it's got, if it's got to be CP one designated, I don't know why it seems to be the only CP one designation store, and I can understand that's why Mr. Rhodes purchased it because of, you know, of the opportunity there. But I mean, it seems like in all of other, all the rest of Piper, there don't, it doesn't appear to be that there's been anything that's been attempted to try to turn into retail and all of that, and I can only get some assumption that that's because they didn't want to, because everything else is, is close enough from where they're at. But, I mean, uh, thank you for the work you do. I can't, you, you guys, wow, we, what you guys do, can't go through every, every mini deal, it's amazing.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Hi, Tony Burks, forty sixty-six North one hundred and seven terrace. So I understand he's saying it's a grocery store, but there's five gas stations in four miles of that location. There's three grocery stores within four miles. Um, my biggest concern is when those fuel tanks go in to the ground. That's a gas station and it's going to be a gas station forever. Nobody's going to pay to have those tanks removed. It, that's, that's going to be astronomical for somebody to build there if his business fails. Hopefully, if, if he gets his business, it runs fine and he has it forever. But once that goes in, it's a gas station forever. Um, it's a no truck zone. Um, what's going to stop trucks from cutting through on independents and coming down through our neighborhood? You know, the people at, on ninety-ninth street, when Amazon came in, were told that you're not going to see semi trucks on ninety-ninth street, you see semi trucks on ninety-ninth street all the time. So also, why don't you see all these Price Shopper, Hen House, putting gas station or gas pumps in their parking lot? They're not doing it, it's away from their business. It's because of the fumes of the gas. And I mean, we're not naive about this, we realize that it's zone commercial property and eventually it's got to be developed. But I don't think any of us want a gas station in our backyard. I, I know, I mean, I wouldn't think that you would want a gas station in your backyard. And then again, how long did downtown scream that they needed a grocery store downtown in the heart of the downtown? And we voted and built the co-op. And how long was the co-op there, three years and it's failed? That's all I got to say, thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else?
Yes, ma'am. My name's Hannah Lang, I live at thirty-nine forty-one North one hundred and eighth court. Um, my home is actually featured on the blueprint. Um, the proposal is one made similar to the applicant on July fourteenth, with the major difference being the number of pumps from eight to three. Uh, this application was denied by planning and zoning and withdrawn from full commission meeting due to the applicant requesting to have that uh, application withdrawn, but to not show up to provide any further information to the commission meeting. So we weren't able to also talk on it if it, just in case it got pulled. Um, in the original proposal, the applicant stated that he would need eight pumps in order to sustain business operations. Uh, the applicant is now saying three would be sufficient. I worry that either the original proposal exaggerated the truth in order to gain eight pumps or that the three pumps currently will not be sustainable and this will become another abandoned business. Um, Piper does have projected growth through both residential and commercial development over the next five to ten year scale uh with or without this particular project. Um, the applicant, applicant also did present data supporting his claims with rural health stats. Um, I would like to note that while the community consensus more than likely would agree that Piper is or at least feels rural. Um, by Census Bureau, Federal Office of Health, Rural Health Policy, Economic Research Service and USDA, the Piper area is actually defined as metropolitan or urban areas. Um, the only time this remotely dips into rural is whenever you actually go down to the block group uh area and then even by that to find it's mixed rather than completely rural. Um, so the statistics presented over um the rural data can't be classified given the whole Piper area doesn't meet the same classification of data. Um, for personal impacts, we did purchase our home early in twenty twenty-four. Uh, we invested our savings into homeownership and we plan to stay in this home for years to come, but eventually we will have to sell to expand our family. Um, we do that, we're are afraid for our home's resale value and marketability because of the proximity um to a gas station and grocery store that would have economic impact on ourselves and the surrounding community. And when we personally picked this, um, we did look at other homes and we did look at homes near gas station and grocery stores and did not particularly choose those because they were next to gas stations and grocery stores. Um, there is a tree line that separates the property from our home. Um, but unfortunately in the fall and winter and partially the spring, the trues, trees completely lose all their foliage. Uh, that means we can see the land from both our dining room, living room and bedroom. Um, we are worried that we will see the, see, smell and hear um all the activity given that the gas pumps themselves are twenty-four hours, even though the grocery store will be closed at ten o'clock. Um, the proposal does include a tree plant, but given our homes that's higher than the property, I feel like we'll still have to see that even whenever the tree plant does go into place and become mature, again, because we have this elevation difference. Um, currently there are five gas stations and three grocery stores within a four mile radius. This does not include Buc-Ee's or another uh gas station that was actually approved um during the July fourteenth uh planning and zoning meeting. Uh, to note that all the existing gas stations that I just talked about, um, they don't back up to residential homes besides one. And even the one that does back up, it only affects three residential homes, as you can see on the plan, it does impact eleven. Um, although the proposer does promise no liquor, vapor, tobacco product sales. There are concerns that if the store was sold or if the proposer alters your plans, these products could be sold and subsequently to pollution and public disturbances. Um, of course, we all have the traffic concern, I don't think I need to reiterate there. Um, and as well as uh, we do have environmental concerns because obviously a gas station does have those tanks, air pollution, all that other fun stuff, and that's not just something that happens immediately, it happens over time, especially with buildup. That's all I've got to say, so thank you.
Thank you. Sir, you are our last speaker in, in, in here, anybody else after this gentleman? Oh, you can be short?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Um, yes, our girl Harris, address four oh seven two North one oh seventh terrace, uh, Kansas City, Kansas. Um, I join in my current community to speak against this alleged grocery store, gas station uh, that could possibly become a liquor store at one oh seven oh two Donahue. We urge the staff to please listen to us and vote against this because it is our neighborhood, it is our community and the commissioners. It is our community that will be uh having the effects of this. Uh, my first question would be, and I don't know if this is the place for, what's the total cost of phase one and phase two of the project? Other, is the financing in place and what's the total square feet of the project? First issue, safety, we're here, we have a safe neighborhood. And this proposed establishment will bring unwanted uh individuals into our space. This intersection is a hotspot for fast and furious car racing on the weekend, for donuts, burnout of a younger generation. Uh, egress onto Donahue and Hutton, turning left will be a major issue. The egress in and out of there at current traffic levels is unsustainable for the community. I know my neighbors already mentioned, but it's unsustainable. Something has to be done there as it currently sits. Pollution, light pollution will be a major factor. I went out this morning and I shot it with my, with my Bushnell GPS and it is a hundred and eight yards from the tip of the curb to where this will be, which is three hundred and twenty-five feet. The tree line is not, it's, it, it need, you need a hundred or a hundred and fifty feet of tree line. It's only maybe forty feet of tree line to diminish the light pollution and the uh, the noise pollution. Next, uh, lights, the big lights there, you know, that's going to attract all kinds of insects, bugs. Bigger issue, we talked about noise pollution and then I'll get to something bigger with safety. Uh, we'll have major issues based on the location. I've already covered that, the noise pollution, the dumpsters clanging down, uh, trash trucks coming in, it's already in a no truck zone. Uh, delivery trucks, HVAC, believe it or not, we can hear in a loud way in the middle of the night the train tracks way down the street that are north and they're at least three or four miles away from it. So a train that runs and you can even hear on good nights, the dirt track loud as all get out. Not making this up, you can't make this stuff up. We pay high dollar property taxes to live in a safe and quiet neighborhood and we will do everything we can to keep it that way. We're not an anti-business, we just want a safe pot, safe space to live, quiet. And, and especially with the increase of property taxes, I think I ought to have a safe neighborhood, a quiet neighborhood for the high level property, as I close, as I digress, I apologize. But here's one for you, no one is.
You're, you're fine, I just didn't know your property taxes went up, I, I didn't know that was a problem here.
Oh, I'm sorry, I got you, I'm with you, I'm with you, I'm with you, I'm with you on that one. Anything you can do to help us, because you're pricing us out. Whether we know it or not, we're just being honest with you. I know we're not on that, but that's just, that's just real talk. Okay, so now, next one, kid's safety. Young kids, children will walk the half mile, and I clocked it today from Highland at the Piper, that is in front of Piper Middle School. They will walk down there to this establishment. Let's please keep in mind, this is not a food desert that we live in. Let me say it again, we're not in a food desert where we are. But those kids, the safety of children walking that half mile from Highlands at the Piper. The road is not safe as it is, there are no sidewalks on either side. They have trouble crossing the street as it is now. Back to traffic, traffic, when I was dropping my daughter off for school in the morning at the high school would literally be until they got a crossing guard out there, back down from Piper High, Piper Middle now, to the four way stop. But consider the kids coming from Heritage, an unsafe bike walk at Piper. Consider the point seven miles from Clearview, unsafe with outside walks coming to that direction. Finally, they, they already said it, property values, property values would go down. Gas tank, I looked at a two thousand and sixteen EPA Lust study, leaky underground storage tank decreases our property values by three to, three to six percent. Toxins, benzene, there was another G S S study and I was trying to get the actual of that, but it talked about um, homes, home values going down over twenty-two percent when you have gas stations like this there. Finally, here's one I don't think anybody's thought about. Grocery store will bring unwanted rodents, rats, mice and everything in a general area. We hope that you will hear the voices of some of the highest paying property tax individuals in Wyandotte County and vote against this and please hear what the tax, what the taxpayers are saying, thank you.
Thank you, sir. And my, my short lady, or she said she was going to be short, that's all right. Yes, ma'am.
I'm Becky Aller, four zero zero four North one hundred and eighth terrace in Kansas City. Uh, we bought our house in twenty fifteen, we moved from rural Kansas. Um, we're attracted to the area because it was quiet, felt like we were in the country, but we were just five minutes from the interstate and for shopping, gas, we had the convenience of it. Wonderful, quiet neighborhood. I have met all these people walking my little papillon around the neighborhood. Um, the children, everyone, I have not had the pleasure to meet you, Mr. Rhodes, I've heard nice things about you. You're a great guy, but I'm just saying from my heart, we do not need a gas station. We do not need a grocery store, we need the peace, we need to be able to hear the birds, unfortunately we hear coyotes, but you know. Um, we would like to not hear the trucks and the semis and have the um pollution. Most of these neighbors are mo- more, are so close that when I went over to their homes the other night and I looked off of their decks, I was like, oh my gosh, this is in your backyard. And I would hope that any of you that were dealing with that would have um the compassion to think about, think about that. And I saw a for sale sign in Mr. Rhodes' house several years after we bought ours. And so I thought he was moving then, so who says he doesn't put this up and then decide to move? And how do we know whoever is going to be running establishment would care for it as he says he would? Thank you so much.
All right, thank you. All right, everybody's had their chance, we're going to go online, I'm going to start with Cynthia Shepherd. Cynthia Shepherd?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, very good. Yes, this is Cynthia Shepherd, I live at thirty-nine twenty-nine North one hundred and eighth court. And I feel like this is deja vu again here uh with this uh proposal again. Uh, and I'm not, I agree with all my neighbors uh who are in opposition of this proposal, the community has spoken. Uh, we are totally against uh this proposal uh for multiple reasons. And we feel that, uh, bottom line, we feel that it would disrupt our peace and safety of our area. Well, you know, we're not against development and, and if there was a, a development that enhanced our neighbor, our neighborhood aligns with our family centered uh environment, we would support that, we support growth. But this proposal with a grocery store, gas station, that's really not needed will create major disruptions and devalue our homes, thank you.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Okay, and our last speaker will be Jerry. Jerry, I need your name and address, please.
Uh, my name, can you hear me?
Yes.
Uh, my name is Jerry Pence, I live at forty twenty-two North one oh eighth terrace. Um, we moved here back in twenty twenty-two, I believe it was. Um, we bought this because we're within drive, driving distance uh for my wife, who's a doctor uh to get to work on time, yet be in a semi rural neighborhood. We're close enough to get everything we want from Legends. We don't need a gas station, I think everybody's already said that, so I don't want to repeat everything everyone said. I want to support what everyone has said because I believe in everything that's said today. Um, my primary things that I was talking, wanted to address is his proposal last time made statements, one that it's, he's gotten, that it's a privately owned or they're, they're going to own. Uh, now there's starting to be rumors of outside investments, there's talks about uh the changing of he, what he's claimed that he was going to donate, now the, the numbers are changing. Uh, if you look at the numbers this time, they're. If you look at the numbers this time, their, his wording is completely changed. The trucks are a big thing to me because I've seen what can happen to in accidents with large trucks and small and small vehicles, which is what would be happening. And this being a travel by primarily people going to work or people taking their kids to school. I don't have to tell people what the numbers are of the fatalities in those accidents. If they do happen, hope they don't happen. Hope everything's fine. It's it's just, everything's changed. His wording has completely backstepped. He he the the one thing that's not talked about also is the trash. We talked about it last time we're here. Sorry, I can't make it sound sick. But the trash that is going to accumulate over days and being taken out, the smell compounds. I've been in the grocery business. I was in it for twelve years. It compounds the stench. There's no reasons why nobody wants to be behind a grocery store. That stench travels miles. I just hope that they can see that how much are against this in our community. Nobody in this community is for this. We've shown time and time again, last time it was the same. Whatever you voted against it last time, we hope that you vote against it again. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, I don't see anyone else with their hands up, so I'm going to close the public portion of the meeting, but I'll invite Mr. Rhodes back up to address some concerns from the neighborhood. Can you tell us about your traffic study?
Yeah, you know, it said that there needed to be some additional turn lanes, which we have proposed on our drawings. And they said that the traffic, the the street, the traffic that's there now is a level D, which which means that, you know, it's not good. The streets don't handle what what's there now. So. But they also said in the traffic study that my development will not increase that traffic. It's going to be the the traffic that passes by that'll be using the facility. So they concurred that there's not going to be an influx of traffic coming off four thirty five to go to that store.
Okay. Who who did your traffic study?
Merge, merge engineers.
Okay.
And staff has a copy of it.
Okay, great, thank you. And also, any comments about Donahue being closed to truck traffic, or we can get that from staff? Did you have any comment you want to make? All right?
No, I mean, my comment is there's trucks now. There, I mean, there's construction going on all the time, and and you have to have dump trucks and 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 semis hauling equipment and, you know, there's, you know, there's trucks now. If you're if you're moving, you're going to have a moving van come down that road. So, I mean, there's there's truck traffic. I think the problem was several years ago, we had this this truck traffic from Deffin Ball that was pulling, and and they weren't even Deffin Ball trucks. They were full of I don't know what, but they were going out to Seven Highway, and I think they were going up to Leavenworth to a dump up there that must have taken some hazardous materials or something. But there, it was a real problem.
And they were using Donahue's cross?
That's correct.
Yeah, okay.
And and that's what precipitated the the no trucking. And and it was good. I I mean, that those trucks shook my house. I mean, but but as far as, you know, this, all this stuff about benzene and all this, you know, these people drive cars. They park them in their garage at night and they shut the door. Now, they come out in the morning, they're still alive. They're not dead. Then they got their little gas cans for their mowers and stuff, and they make spills and stuff all over the place. It isn't, you're not going to see that. They're not going to be affected by my pumps or or dispensers or.
Well, that was the question I was going to ask you. In in the development and the engineering and all the stuff that you you would have had to do to come up with this this program, was there any, I mean, in working with engineers, was there any discussion about like environmental pollutants, contaminants, or anything like that? There was not? Okay.
No.
All right, so there, so you haven't had any testing, you don't have any testing results or anything like that? It didn't come up during the design?
Industry does it. I mean, you can get a hold of Phillips Petroleum and and ask them.
Okay, but you, but during the, with working with your engineers and your people, that's something that just doesn't come up in the design and that kind of process. Okay, just wanted to make sure. Are you going to have diesel fuel on the three pumps?
One pump will have, one side of one dispenser will have diesel.
Okay. What about runoff onto the back? I know, I mean, I know there is the 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 topography.
Yeah, well, we've, we've got sanitary or storm sewers designed. And I think staff has.
All right, so the runoff.
Going through a report, so that if that's all been designed to handle the runoff.
Okay, and with regard to the trees that are along the back part of the property on the north side, with the road coming in from the north, I guess coming, I guess it'd be coming from the south down. Is there going to be any any type of removal of trees that are currently on the property right now toward toward the backside?
Not not that. You see my property line? So from that dash line north is all wooded. There'll still be some trees in that, well, there's not going to be any trees where that grade is, okay? Because that's going to be a slope of grass. But but everything on top of that is wooded, okay? On top of that graded slope, that'll all be wooded. And you can see that I put pine trees where that gap was from where that that graded slope to where if, you know, we're going to take out a few trees on my property.
But that's your landscape plan behind that access roads?
Right there. You can see where those pine trees would be. So I'm going to have to take out a few trees on my property, but not on their property. They're still going to have that that buffer.
And then you're putting in additional trees?
Absolutely.
All right. Uh, let's see, I'm sorry.
And and not only that, if you look at that, so you see that that median that's kind of behind the store, that's full of trees. That's full of trees. And then you've got on the outside of the road are more trees. So it's not, I mean, it's like layered.
Okay. All right, I think that's the only questions that I can, that you will be able to answer. So is there anything else you want to add before we close out public portion of the meeting and you sit down?
No, just that, you know, when it comes to competition, as far as there's a grocery store here, there and everywhere, you had Aldi build build next to Walmart and Target, and they both sell groceries and and they figured it was gonna, they were gonna, you know, it's just a different business model. It's why Aldi was able to do that. Mine's a different business model than theirs.
One last question for you. What's the square footage of your building? And I'll be in our packet.
Here's fifteen.
Fifteen thousand?
Yeah. So a quick trip's five.
All right. Okay, anything else you wanted to add? All right, great. Thank you very much. All right, we'll now go to staff, get their comment. And can, you can address what you can with regard to some of the issues with regard to traffic, the width of the roads, those kinds of things.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Byron Toy Planning Department. If I missed anything that I have in my notes, please go ahead. If you took notes as well, if I missed something.
I wasn't doodling up here.
I figured as much.
Really, I wasn't.
So to answer a couple of questions related to drainage, the site will flow from storm water flowing north to south and then kind of tapering, you see the drainage, the retention basin in the south portion of the property. That's where it'll collect and then drain southeast underneath, underneath Donahue and Hutton and drain and go and collect. So that's how water will flow from north to south. Answer that original question related to truck traffic, kind of going out of order.
Does that water then travel across Donahue and down into a, like, some sort of retention basin?
Towards Piper, I think it's Piper Creek or or Connor Creek to the east.
Correct, all right.
So under under four thirty five and then back around.
Okay.
Related to truck traffic, in talking to Public Works actually today, truck, there is truck traffic signs, no truck traffic signs that you see that are the truck with the symbol, you know, the red line through it. That does not prevent trucks from actually using that road specifically to make deliveries. That is specifically in the code for public work, saying that you can use this road, even though there's a line that says no trucks, to make normal deliveries for a business. So that would not prohibit any future business, whatever may be here, this or something else, from having a truck being delivering produce, goods and services, whatever, to this location. To date, if there were four or more pumps that would require a change zone, which we saw back in July. So as of right now, three pumps is allowed by right within C one, CP one. The reason why you're seeing this is because this is going back through, this is going through a preliminary plan because there's a planned district. But every nuance detail, the three pumps service station and the green, the grocery store, excuse me, are all permitted by right within the district. So nothing that he is proposing is out of step with what C one allows or CP one allows. But if, in fact, he wanted to expand in the future, we'd have to come back through this process, actually go through re-zoning, much like he did in July of this year, go through this whole process again. And then that's your decision whether or not you want to make that, you know, recommendation to the Board of Commissioners for whatever, whatever path you want to go down. But just to give you some context, any future expansion, whether it be additional on the store or more fuel pumps may require, will require a change zone. But then, as far as any expansion on the store itself, would require potentially a preliminary and final plan review, depending on what, how large that expansion actually is. The Prairie, Prairie Dollar Piper area plan does designate this property as planned commercial back when the Prairie Dollar Piper plan was created, which I believe was in two thousand and two, two thousand and one. So this corner has been designated for the last twenty four years as commercial. Zoning then changed in two thousand and three from agricultural to CP one. And this plat was recorded to sub, to break off from subdivision to the north, take out a tract F, create a new parcel. And that was done in two thousand and sixteen. So that's why you see lot one, lot two, as shown in this, in this exhibit. Related, related delivery trucks or deliveries of fuel, for example. Those only should be day deliveries. He said he's going to close at ten o'clock. This is not a twenty four hour operation. Um, those should be during the day, not not at dusk at six o'clock in the evening where residents are home and that's where the peak, that's the P M peak coming through this intersection is about five to six P M. And the inverse, the A M peak is six, seven A M in the morning. So those two times where you have the most travelers coming southbound on Hutton, eastbound on Donahue, to hit the stoplight to go arguably east towards four thirty five. And that's where you have the prominent congestion points. So I would argue that a stipulation be made, should you guys approve, recommend approval, that deliveries are done solely during, after the peak hours, after eight A M, before five o'clock, to allow minimal disruption with anyone coming through this intersection. So the truck can serve, the fuel station, leave, exit back on a four thirty five and make its way wherever it needs to go. Staff has already conditions of approval related to, or stipulations related to lighting, which I've managed to cut off fixtures on the building. Light cannot exceed one foot candle at the property line. As you mentioned, there's LED lights, but those lights need to shine down and kind of, lighting as measured from the property line is both, is both vertically and horizontally. So it's not just light that is shining upward, but also shining out. And so one foot candle at the property line is the max. Also landscaping and screening that'll be done on the north side of the property, not lot two, because that's his property, but he still has trees there. But I'm supposed to be talking in subdivision to the north, their common space, and then the space that is between the drive aisle, leading you through the site. That area needs to be, will be landscaped, and this will come back again as the final plan, and should this was to be approved. This will still be heard through this body here for approval of a final plan, which additional conditions are being placed upon that plan if need be. With that, staff recommends approval.
All right, Byron, could you just address sidewalks, at least on the property, too?
So there are sidewalks leading basically the perimeter of his property from west on Donahue going arguably to his house, where it stops there.
Right.
And then north up to his property line. So in in the event that Hutton Road, either with another developer, does development occurs north or west.
Got to start somewhere.
Got to start somewhere.
All right.
And so whether, you know, that, if, you know, if there's monies that come across that the U G can, or Public Works can expand a sidewalk connection, kind of like you saw with Leavenworth Road and what what happened there with the roundabout, and kind of you've had sidewalks kind of leading towards Whispering Ridge. That that potentially could happen here, where you can expand that sidewalk going north on the west side of the road and then get up to Independence and then from there, middle school from there and keep working your way north and maybe with the crosswalk that runs on the east side of subdivision, I can't think of the name off the top of my head, but thank you. That, with that crosswalk, that that could be the connection point to get you to the east side. Maybe continue to Highlands of Piper, you know, so there's, there may be some crossing where there's a natural crosswalk, but it's possible that with with, again, if we come into money, we have something we can expand that sidewalk north.
All right, thank you. Questions for staff? Commissioner Beth?
What, did you go back and far enough to see what, why it was originally zoned commercial? Or what was, what was the original use for that, for the change of zoning?
I did not go that far back in two thousand and three to see what the rationale was from going from AG to CP one.
Okay, and the the, it was, it's kind of hard to tell the distances in the map. But it doesn't look like it's four hundred feet even close between his northern property line and the houses in the common property. In fact, when I look at the, the turn lane that that's a hundred and fifty foot, it it looks like it's really close to those houses, a button against there to where the land's going to be cut away there to slope down. And you see what I'm talking about? In the circle drive, the the houses right there on the south side of that circle drive, the the distance looks really close in that common area from his property up to there.
So if I go back, pardon me, go back to that presentation that they had, I realize that it's.
Unless that house is four hundred foot long, it looks like it would fit in a square there.
So in looking at, and again, this from the presentation that was previously by the first individual that spoke, they have some site lines, which I could do if I pulled up U G maps right now, but I cannot. Looking at the eastern property line here, it looks like it's a hundred and twenty two feet, and that's from the edge of the property. And then, you know, I want to, I want to do a ballpark guess, but double that line, maybe even two and a half times the length of that line, you're looking at three hundred feet, maybe even a little bit longer than that. Again, that's the building, not the property line, but the building. And I just want to make that distinction.
Right, yeah, I'm I'm looking at his northern property line, which is wherever his expansion is going to go is going to possibly encroach as far as he can to the north. That that it looks like, I don't know how long them houses are, but but it it looks like it's less than a hundred feet.
Hundred eighty feet, exactly. You can come sit for himself.
Anything else?
No.
Other questions for staff? All right, I am seeing none. Before we get to a motion, first of all, I want to thank you all for your engagement. I want to thank Mr. Rhodes for being here tonight. Also, I also want to thank you for your dedication to your community. But most of all, I want to thank you all for your civility tonight, that you all came up here and this is how public discourse should work. You are all very civil to one another and to Mr. Rhodes and Mr. Rhodesback and everybody else. So I want to thank you all for that before we get to a motion. So at this point, are there any other questions for staff or anything else that needs to be said before we move to a motion? Mr. Commissioner Straws?
Not to prolong the night, and I think it's been asked and answered, but I just want extreme clarification. This property is zoned for what he is trying to build currently. This is just, and anybody could build anything of this nature on this particular property in the future unless it was changed back to something different in the zoning process?
Yes. Kind of. Go ahead, Mr. Toy.
Byron Toy Planning Department, it is a planned district, so that's why you're seeing a plan interview, preliminary plan interview right now. But as far as the specific use that he's proposing, all three, grocery store, gas station, three pumps, those three entities, those three things are allowed by right within the district.
Okay. All right.
Other questions or clarifications?
Commissioner Ward.
Commissioner Ward, go ahead.
I, I just want to make clarification. A little bit of research, I think, told me, that's why I'm, and I know you didn't go back that far. I think when they changed this to commercial, it was for like a greenhouse or like a nursery. Mom was pretty positive that, don't quote me on that. But I think that's what the original purpose was, which would kind of fit the community a little better than this. But yeah, that's what it was changed for back twenty-four years ago, so.
Commissioner Ward, you may be the only one here old enough to remember that, so. No, no, no burn, no burn. Yeah, that was, that was for Mr. Commissioner Beth's benefit. Any further questions or clarifications? At this time, I'll entertain a motion. Commissioner Straws?
Yeah, I don't know. I'm gonna, I'm gonna jump in on this one because this is, this is a difficult one for me uh, and the community and the person, property owner. And I think uh, probably nobody leaves this room completely satisfied, but I'll make this motion uh, in that, in that inference. Uh, and I'm gonna move uh, to deny the P R two zero two five dash zero two eight. I believe that's, I got the right number. I'm, it was about an hour ago when I got that number, but uh, if I'm wrong, we can correct it. But that's just due to uh, unfit in the neighborhood uh, and. Uh, it's gonna cause undue strain on this particular uh, area of the community.
A second. All right, motion's been made by Commissioner Straws to deny. Plan review application, two thousand and twenty-five dash zero two eight. And I'm gonna take a stab at what you're trying to say here, that it's not in conformance with the, tell me again your reason for denial.
Basically, it's not in conformance with the neighborhood um, uh, design and um. From all of the safety concerns in this particular area as it relates to the traffic and the proximity to the resident, residential area.
The motion for denial is made for the reasons of a nonconformance to the area and concerns expressed this evening with regard to traffic and additional concerns presented tonight. Is that correct?
Yes.
All right, and there's a second by Commissioner Beth. Is there a discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Straws?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Armstrong?
Aye.
Beth?
Hi.
Ernst?
Hi.
Jones?
Hi.
Muller?
Aye.
Miller? Miller?
Oh.
No?
No.
Okay. Motion carries seven to one.
All right, thank you. This will be heard one more time, uh, October thirtieth at uh, seven PM before the Board of Commissioners. Again, thank you all for being here. Thank you for your patience and for your uh, comments this evening, everybody. Rose, does that conclude our agenda?
Yep, that is uh, the final uh, thing for tonight.
All right, thank you all. Uh, we'll see you next month.